Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the -- a special Acton Town meeting to order. I am Town Moderator Joanne Berry. I would first like to point out, before anybody has any questions, that Select Board Member Peter Berry and I are not in any way related. So, we are here tonight to consider and vote on three articles of business in this legislative session of the Town Government. It is the voters' opportunity to participate directly in the branch of government with the power to make and amend bylaws and to appropriate funds. It is your opportunity to speak directly as a legislator. So, just as a question, how many people are here at your first town meeting? Quite a few. Okay, good. Thank you for coming. And I know it's a not pleasant night outside, so thanks for coming. Just as a reminder, next week, on Tuesday, December 17th, we will also have a vote at the ballot, at the polls, to vote on two of the articles we're hearing about tonight and the Minuteman School financing, which will be explained shortly. I would also like to thank the babysitters and the crew that are working in the, I think, the small gym, whatever that's called, for providing this service so that parents may participate. Just as a reminder, the kids need to be picked up at nine o'clock. So, we'll see how efficient we can be and get as much stuff done by then. I would like to also call your attention to, there are three surveys, and there's a sheet with the three columns on it, that groups in town are looking for information. You can take West Acton Library Housing Production Plan in the Town Meeting Improvements Committee. You can take those surveys on your phone, on your computer, and in the case of the Town Meeting improvements, there is a paper copy available, and there's a box down front here, and I think there's another one over by the door. The committee has been working for several months, and will take all the information gathered through multiple sources to make a recommendation, or to make recommendations for improvements to Town Meeting by mid-February so that they can be enacted in the spring town meeting. Tonight, I will be asking for your election of an Assistant Temporary Moderator, in case more folks do keep coming and we need to expand over to the gym, which so far, we don't need to. But I, and I will want to continue to have an Assistant Moderator, and I do encourage anybody who is interested to contact me through the Town website. So, I am hoping, it is my goal as moderator for tonight's meeting and any others, that we make efficient and respectful use of everyone's time. So, please be respectful of the time limits, which are indicated on the clocks. There's a big clock down there. We can all see the clocks. The speakers can see the clocks. And as a member of the meeting, you will have two minutes to speak from the floor. Just as a note, the pro microphones are over on this side, your right, my left. The con microphones are over here, on the other side. And if you have a question, you can go to any microphone. That's okay. And if there are questions, I will recognize the appropriate person to respond. Finally, if you feel that debate has gone on long enough, and that it is time to vote, that we've heard enough information, you may move the previous question when I recognize you. You may not, then make a point or ask a question, and then move the question. You only get to do that one thing. Once there is a second to the motion, it is not debatable or amendable, and requires a two-thirds vote to pass. I will say, we, all of these articles are very important, so I do want to have a complete discussion on them. So, don't be the third person up and say you want to vote. Next item, at tonight's meeting, there will be speakers who are not residents of Acton, including our Superintendent of Schools, Peter Light, and there may be others who will answer questions, who work for the Town. All who are in favor of hearing from such speakers, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. At, at this time, I will also nominate as Temporary Moderator William Mullin. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Oh, he's right over there. Ready in the, in the wings, actually. So, let's do a practice run with the clickers. So, I think there's a picture of the clickers. So, when it comes time to vote, I will say, once we've made the vote to vote, cutoff debate, or debate has naturally expired, I'll say it's time to vote. And then you, everyone should turn on their clicker with the orange button. Don't squash it down too hard. Apparently, that causes problems. So, just turn it on enough, and then this little screen comes up, and it says, "Town meeting," and ready. And then your choices are, if you want to vote aye, choose A, and if you want to vote no or nay, you choose E, like elephant. There we go. And then if you, if you're having any problem at all, put your hand up, and one of the tellers will come around, and we will pause the vote, if there's any issues at all with the clickers. There will be a 20-second window, so if we need to pause it, we'll pause it and continue with the vote. The vote that will be recorded is the last button that you push. So, if you change your mind, or you hit the wrong thing, whatever the last one is in that 20-second window will be the one that is recorded. So, let's do, and we will use them on each article tonight, because they all require two-thirds vote. So, let's just do a practice question, which is, will we break both the warm and cold temperature records this winter? Maybe this week. But will we break both the warm and cold temperature records this winter? Yes for A, no E. Oh, please open the voting window. I forgot to do my part. Are the folks in the back waving to people, or are you having problems?
I'm having problems.
Okay. Okay. Okay, could we do another test, please? Okay, is tech team all set over there? Okay. So, the voting window should, so, should people turn off and turn back on? Or does it matter? Doesn't matter. Okay. So, once again, the question is, will we break the, both the hot and, or the warm and cold temperature records this winter for our Town? A equals yes, E equals no. I don't see any hands for people having troubles. Okay, could we close the voting window now? Okay, all set. Did everybody thing work okay? Okay. The check mark means it did work. If you get the check mark after you make your choice, it means it did work. And, yes, we will. That's the amateur weather people's consensus. We might break it anytime. Alrighty. Thank you for participating in the test. All right. Before we get to Article One, Jason Cole from the Finance Committee will present the Finance Committee's position on Article One. I believe in seven minutes.
Seven minutes and small change.
Tiny change.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you Chairman Borden for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Finance Committee. This short presentation addresses two topics. The first is an overview of the potential debt impact of the articles under consideration tonight, and the second is the Finance Committee's recommendation on the proposed consolidated school project. My colleagues will speak to the North Acton Fire Station and the sewer project as those articles come to the floor. To begin, let us take a brief look at the history of our debt burden and debt exclusions. A debt exclusion is taxation that exists over and above the limits of Proposition Two and a Half. In other words, this is the Town agreeing to have taxes rise faster than a standard two-and-a-half percent increase for a specific purpose for a prescribed amount of time. As a Town, we have not had any excluded debt since the Public Safety Facility in 2002. Prior to that, a debt override for renovations to this very high school was passed in 2000. Twenty-one years ago this past Sunday, monies were appropriated for R.J. Gray and the existing twin school. That's right. The Parker-Damon Project, though clearly not all of its alumni, has reached the drinking age. This is not to say that we have not taken out a bond for larger ticket items, such as the roof of the library, new fire engines, and other larger school repairs, but the repayment of those debts were all within the confines of the revenue raised by Proposition Two and a Half. Of the three articles tonight, the new consolidated school and the North Acton Fire Station are both debt exclusion projects. The sewer proposal is not a debt exclusion proposal, and any general obligation costs would be paid out of standard annual taxation or other sources. At the ballot next Tuesday, there is a question of moving the debt already incurred for Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical High School to become excluded debt. The taking out of a bond does not mean an automatic debt exclusion. The authorization to borrow is for Town Meeting to discuss and approve. The exclusion of the debt from Proposition Two and a Half requires a ballot vote as well. The Finance Committee feels it is important that projects not be brought to the taxpayer without planning and foresight. The Consolidated School Project addresses Gates, Douglas, and the Carol Hebner Early Childhood Program. Coupled with a decade-plus worth of projection in the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District's capital improvement plan, the schools have clearly laid down a marker on identified need. The North Acton Fire Station is being brought by the Board of Selectmen as the largest imminent need. The Finance Committee strongly encourages the municipal side to formulate a long-term plan commensurate with the school side. But there is value at looking at both of these asks at the same time, lest only the first project through the gate be funded, despite the strengths or weaknesses of subsequent projects. It is important to note that no one project tonight is contingent on any other project. The debt from the Public Safety Facility will be fully retired in fiscal year '24. Similarly, the debt from the high school and the junior high school ends in fiscal year '25, and the Parker-Damon Building is fully paid off in '23. While it is true that the next few years will have historically high debt payments, which will peak in fiscal year '21 at 7% of total taxation, by 2026, the percentage of taxation going to pay off debt will be back at 4%, which is where we were in fiscal year 2015, and well below the 5% that was seen each year between 2005 and 2009. While it is always difficult to accept, the value of a dollar does not stay constant year to year, which is why it is important to also look at percentages, not just the raw dollars. The almost $100 million in debt authorized between 1998 and 2002 was done against the backdrop of taxation between $30 and $40 million a year, in contrast with the $86 million in taxation this current fiscal year. While none of us relish, while none of us relish the thought of paying the amounts shown on the previous slide, that is the nature of long-term capital expenditures. The first couple of years on a mortgage are undeniably difficult. That eases as the fixed payment costs are degraded by inflation. Now, as to the proposed new consolidated twin school for Douglas and Gates on the Gates site. Clearly, the cheapest way to provide classrooms for a district of 5,000-plus students is in one big building. All of the schools could collapse down onto one parcel of land. I hear there is a spot for sale right across the street from the current campus. But that proposal didn't go over very well. If the pendulum were to swing all the way to the other side, then clearly, the best education is individualized instruction. But taking the hometown guarantee in the ABRSD agreement and bringing it down to the home-schoolhouse guarantee seems a bit extreme as well. So, a balance needs to be struck. The Finance Committee is not the right body to comment on the educational benefits of a new school. I will leave that to Superintendent Light and Dr. Peterson. I could be wrong, but I do not believe that any member of the Finance Committee will have any more children who will enter kindergarten in this newly-built school. Yet, as a committee, we see the value in addressing an overdue need by building a new structure. We agree with the economies of scale of consolidating two schools into one. We acknowledge the benefit of maintaining two discrete school communities, even if housed under one roof. And we are satisfied that this second twin school in Town will have learned lessons from the Parker-Damon Building. The risk of building a single school now and hoping to immediately get back into the MSBA pipeline to build a second one is too great not to move now on a consolidated school building with the current MSBA approval in hand. Furthermore, current interest rates make it an opportune time to make this investment in our district. Building a new structure addresses a significant portion of the risk identified in the Doran-Woodier Report. This is an MSBA-funded project, to the tune of $38 million. Interest rates are at a historic low. The yield on a 30-year Treasury bond today was at 2.27%. I don't know about you, but I certainly did not purchase my house with a 2.27% interest rate note. In the past, it has been my responsibility to report the opinion of the Finance Committee, but this time, Madam Moderator, it is my pleasure to report that the Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article tonight and asks for a yes vote at the ballot next Tuesday. Thank you for your time and for attending Town Meeting.
In general, I would like us to refrain from applause and reactions from the audience in the essence of time, and it just is disruptive oftentimes. That was not disruptive, but sometimes it is. The next item, briefly, we will hear from Selectman John Benson and Mike Majors from the Finance Committee to explain the Minuteman debt funding. We are not discussing this tonight, but it is on the ballot next week, and we thought it would be a good idea if people were up to date on why we're doing that.
Good evening. Above is the sample ballot for the Tuesday, December 17, town-wide ballot question election. In addition to the proposed debt exclusions for the Douglas-Gates Twin School, that's ballot question one, and the North Acton Fire Station, which is ballot question two, to be voted next Tuesday, citizens will be voting on a third, on a proposed third debt exclusion for Acton's allocable share of the construction debt for the recently completed Minuteman Technical Vocational High School. The new high school opened this past September. Just by way of background, in April 2016, Town Meeting unanimously passed Article 10, approving the Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District's borrowing of funds to build the new Minuteman High School. Back then, there was considerable uncertainty as to how many of the district's 16-member communities would vote in favor of the new high school and remain in the district. The number of communities remaining in the district would determine Acton's allocable share of the construction debt for the new high school. Until the number of communities was known, Acton paid its initial allocable share assessment during the construction phase from general fund revenues, that's mostly real estate taxes. Those assessments were just under $300,000 for fiscal year '19. That was the year that ended June 30, 2019. And $348,000 for fiscal year '20, that's the year we're in right now. And the assessment for fiscal year '21, that's the year we're planning for now, starting July 1, 2020, will be $424,000. The Minuteman School District now consists of nine-member communities. Six of the communities have voted to exempt their allocable share of the construction debt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half. The Board of Selectmen has determined the continued use of general fund revenues to pay Acton's allocable share of the construction debt places too great a strain on the Town's operating budget. Ballot questions three seek citizen approval to exempt Acton's allocable share of the construction debt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half. Mike Majors of the Finance Committee will explain the financial and tax implications of the Minuteman debt. Thank you.
Yes, this Minuteman project has been in the works for, for more than a decade, and my involvement with the Building Committee has lasted at least five years. The, and the end result is a wonderful educational vocational opportunities for members' communities, for member communities, especially the Town of Acton. The total project cost for Minuteman is, is at $144.9 million. Acton's responsibility would range from $10 million to $12 million based on the amount of, of the final bond issue. Our proposed payment method will be debt exclusion, and the impact on the average single-family home would range anywhere between $56.60 to $81.14. And it's, the variance is if, if we go 25- or 30-year bonds, and, and there's still some discussion about what the final bonding amount will be. It should be noted that the building has been completed, and, and the new school has opened in September. There was an open house in November, and I hope people of eighth graders, you know, took the opportunity to, to visit Minuteman Tech, and they would be pleasantly surprised. The project did come in on budget, and we are not seeking additional funds. So, basically, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next thing, I have a tiny secret screen up here that I can see there are some folks in the gym in overflow, and the Town Clerk has mentioned that you should actually be coming over to the auditorium. We do have seats over here. So, the folks who are in the gym should make their way to the auditorium. All right. That brings us to Article One. Are the members gonna come down?
So, while we're assembling--
Hold, Mr. Peter. I will read the motion. We'll carry on. All right. Just for your information, this article was drafted by the Mass School Building Assistance Program, and is the same article that will be voted in Boxborough around now, and I do have to read it. So, I shall. "Mr. Peterson Moves That the Town Hereby Approves the $116,000,28,519 Borrowing Authorized by the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District for the Purpose of Paying Costs for the Design and Construction of a New C.T. Douglas-Paul Gates Elementary School and Carol Hebner Early Childhood Program into a Single Facility on the Gates School Site located at 75 Spruce Street, Acton, 'Including the Payment of All Costs Incidental or Related There To the Project,' Which School Facility Shall Have an Anticipated Useful Life as an Educational Facility of the Instruction of School Children of at Least 50 Years, and For Which the District May Be Eligible for, for a School Construction Grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, Said Amount to be Expended at the Direction of the District's School Building Committee." That the Town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Provided further that any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of (1) 49.7% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or (2) the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that the approval of the district's borrowing by this vote shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the Town to exempt its allocable share of the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by MGL Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition Two and a Half, so-called, and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount sent forth in the project-funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to your presentation.
Thank you. I apologize for being so excited, but we do have two special guests that I wanted to introduce, Larry Spring, the architect from Arrow Street, and Chuck Adam from Skanska, who is a project manager. And I think everybody realizes that for a project of this scope, it's key to have technical people. So, if there are questions that rely on their expertise, we have them here this evening. I'm also very pleased to introduce the Acton members of the Building Committee. To my left, we have Dr. Whitbeck, Iamie Christian Murthy, J.D. Head, Jason Cole, Dennis Bruce, Catherine Raymond, Bob Evans, and Peter Berry. And again, I thank them for their efforts. Tonight, we have the opportunity to lay one of the foundation stones for the next two-- for the next 50 years of education in Acton. I thank the citizens, educators, select persons, finance and school committee members comprising the Building Committee who have developed a proposal we bring to you this evening. Over the past two years, the A.B. Building Committee used the feasibility funding provided by Town Meeting to explore combinations and permutations of needs, designs, and building sites. Their proposal endorsed by the School Committee is a building to house Douglas, Gates, and the Carol Hubner Early Childhood Program, and will be located on the Gates site. The background of this slide is an architectural rendering of the new school. The school was designed, keeping in mind our vision and the strong commitment of our communities to education. The Building Committee worked diligently to maximize the value of our new building and minimize its cost. The significant cost of the project, $116 million, is offset by an expected reimbursement of $38 million from the Massachusetts School Building Authority and the Boxborough contribution of almost $12 million. Acton will issue debt to fund $66 million or 57% of the project, resulting in a tax increase on the median single-family home of between $452 and $509. We'll take a closer look at finances at the end of the presentation. Now Superintendent of Schools Peter Light will provide a history of the need for and the design of the new school.
Good evening. The Douglas-Gates project is the result of over four years of planning that began in 2015 when the district contracted architect Doran Whittier to do a comprehensive study of all of our facilities. The study identified needs at several schools, which led us to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or MSBA, for acceptance into their reimbursement program. Since being accepted into the program in 2017, the district has worked with Skanska as our project manager and Arrow Street architects to study a variety of options to best meet the needs of our students and community. Based on the Doran Whittier study from 2015-16, the Douglas Elementary School was identified as the school in greatest need of major renovation or replacement. Following that study, the district applied to and was accepted into the MSBA core program, and citizens at Town Meetings in Acton and Boxborough authorized $1.3 million for the study of a possible solution. Because the 2015-16 study identified issues related to health and safety, code compliance, accessibility, energy efficiency, and the presence of hazardous materials across multiple schools, and based on the extensive planning and community feedback during the 2015-16 study, the district worked with the MSBA to allow us to study the possible construction of a twin school similar to the Parker-Damon Building. This would allow us to address problems across multiple schools in one more cost-effective project. This brief video coming up will highlight some of the concerns at the Gates and Douglas Elementary Schools.
Hi, I'm Chris Whitbeck. I'm the principal of the Douglas School here in Acton, and I'm going to give you a tour of the school and show you some of the highlights. This is our school cafetorium. It is where all of our students eat lunch, and we gather for all of our all-school assemblies. The cafetorium is built for 280 students. We have to fit in over 400. One of the major problems of the school is that it is too small for the number of students that we have, and so we have added on modular classrooms. Those are temporary classrooms that have been here for 16 years. So this modular houses four different programs, and the staff are very crowded as they teach in this space. This modular houses our art program. Again, a very, very, very crowded space. The art room spills out into the hall for additional storage of both materials and student projects. So all of the students, kindergarten through sixth grade, have to come out of the art room to use the sink. And we've actually had to hire assistant staff for the younger students to supervise them using the sink during art. The Douglas School is two stories, and while we have a ramp that goes upstairs, and wheelchairs can go upstairs, we only have stairs going downstairs, so the school is not handicapped accessible. So space continues to be an issue at Douglas School, and we have converted storage closets into classrooms for small groups of students and larger storage areas into conference rooms. One of the things that we do a lot at Douglas School is have students break out into small groups to do work, and we use the hallways. Unfortunately, there is no private space in the hallways, no small nooks, no study areas, and everybody's learning is very, very visible.
Hi, I'm Lynn Newman, principal of the Gates School. I'd like to take you today on a little tour of the Gates School so you can see some of the space challenges we have here. So here we have one of our spaces that we work with lots of our children. And so this is a room where small groups of students work, but as you can imagine, the space is quite small to provide the type of services that we'd like to offer. Additionally, as you look up, the walls do not quite go up to the ceiling, and so another one of the challenges to this space is that it gets noisy in the hallways, and especially during lunchtime, being so close to the cafeteria. We have support services for students who need a little extra help in math and reading. The first space is the math space, and so the assistant works with students, up to four to five students with each group, and that's in grades kindergarten through third grade. And then just behind her workspace, we have reading support. And so the reading assistant is also here, working with students, maybe four in a group. And so combined, you have potentially eight to 10 kids working in this space. And this space is where we offer special education services for our children. This is for students in grades kindergarten through the sixth grade. We have three special educators that share this space, and they work with students at different times depending on the program. At times, we can have up to 25 students working with the adults in this space. And here is the Gates cafeteria. And this additionally is a multipurpose room for the school. This is where, in the afternoons, where we have our extended-day program, both in the morning and in the afternoon. During the day, this is a space where the kids would have their lunches. We have a two-hour lunch period. And oftentimes, you would find teachers working with small-group instruction in this space. And the stage is a very important place for primarily concerts for band and strings and chorus. But it's behind the stage that you would find a spot where our physical therapist is working with students who are working on physical therapy. And you can see on the floor, it's a bit tired, but it does lend itself to being able to be a space where they can work on gross motor skills and support services on their education plan.
The district's projected enrollment, which was developed in conjunction with MSBA, has also driven the enrollment capacity of the Douglas-Gates project. We have been fortunate, over the past decade, to have seen a decline in enrollment because, over the same time, we've seen a significant increase in the needs of our students with regard to the services they receive for both special education and English-language learners. Both of these programs have required the district to allocate significant classroom space, and because of this, the district is currently using all of our classrooms to serve our students. Over the next decade, we anticipate significant enrollment growth among our elementary population, and this project, which accommodates 990 students in grades K through six, will allow us to increase classroom capacity to meet our future enrollment needs and continue to provide a high level of educational services to all students while maintaining appropriate class sizes. Over the past 18 months, our Building Committee worked with Arrow Street to study 16 different options for the new school. Through the study, we determined that building a consolidated school for $117.3 million was far more cost-effective than to either renovate and add on to the existing Douglas School for $91.5 million or to rebuild only the Douglas School for $99 million. After carefully considering input from the community and families and studying the suitability of the Douglas-Gates and Conant sites as well as their associated costs, it was determined that the current Gates site was the most appropriate location for the new school. Additionally, because including the preschool classrooms in this project made them eligible for state reimbursement, it was determined to include these classrooms in the project as well. This solution allows us to address three of our highest priority schools with one project. The educational plan for the new school is at the heart of the design, and while we are designing a school that will open in 2022, we are also designing a school that will continue to educate our students in 2072. The school features a modern library-media center, two science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics labs, or STEAM labs, as well as two multipurpose rooms, a large learning commons for public exhibitions of student work, a full-size double gym that houses a competition basketball court for community use, which can be divided during the day for school use, as well as a smaller health and wellness gym for use by our younger students. Additionally, because we know that our students often work in small groups, each of our classrooms shows a small breakout space with its adjacent classroom. And finally, we have planned multiple outdoor learning spaces throughout the campus as a way to feature surrounding wetlands in our students' education. The school will be fully accessible for persons with disabilities and has two elevators. Each school has appropriate learning spaces for students with disabilities, including three learning centers, two speech and language rooms, a sensory room, and two resource rooms per school. Preschool students will have access to nursing services, which they currently do not, and they will also be able to access specials such as art, music, and physical education. The new school is located on the southern side of the Douglas-Gates site, next to the existing Gates School. Once completed, we will have parking as well as a softball and multipurpose field on the Douglas side and a dedicated parent drop-off loop with access to the West Acton boardwalk. In order to provide year-round access to the West Acton boardwalk, we will widen and cover it so that it can be maintained during winter without the use of sand or salt, which could damage the surrounding wetlands. On the site of the new school, we are separating bus and car traffic with separate entrances to reduce the impact of traffic on West Acton. The building is divided over three floors. The first floor provides for the main entrance and administration spaces, our preschool classrooms, and common spaces such as the divisible cafeteria and performance areas, as well as our gymnasiums. The upper floors of the building were intentionally designed to house one school per floor, are educationally identical, and designed around a two-story library-media center, which serves as the heart of the building. Our kindergarten, first and second-grade classrooms are located in the north wing of the school with a separate cluster for third and fourth-grade classrooms. The fifth and sixth-grade classrooms are located in their own wing. Each school also has an area on the school floor that provides space for counseling and special education offices, as well as meeting rooms. A view into the classroom shows the small-group breakout spaces on the far-right wall and a view into the entry vestibule along the far wall, where students can enter, store boots, coats, and backpacks, and access the sinks. This is also an area for storage of teacher materials. The look of the school was designed to feel like it belongs in West Acton, and our architects spent considerable time in West Acton Village studying the architecture of the buildings. Elements of these buildings were incorporated into the design, and overall, the school will look somewhat like a 19th-century mill building. On the left-hand side of the image, you can see solar canopies covering the parking lot, which is an important element of our project's sustainability goals. Along with the education program, sustainability has driven the design of this project. The school is designed to produce as much energy as it consumes through the use of solar panels on the roof and over the parking lots. The energy produced through these panels is designed to completely offset the school's energy needs for heating, cooling, and electricity. The school will use geothermal technology as its primary source for heating and cooling, but the Building Committee opted to supplement the system with two electric boilers in order to save on capital costs while maintaining the school as fossil-fuel and combustion-free. Water conservation is important to the community, and we will collect rainwater from the roof of the building and store this in underground tanks for reuse and flushing toilets. Finally, modern construction and demolition practices allow for the building's construction waste to be sorted on-site and recycled rather than simply being placed in landfills. While the design of the school focused on the educational needs of students, the overall project was also designed to be a cost-effective solution for the community. By consolidating the building into a twin school, we are able to address multiple needs in one project. Additionally, by including our preschool classrooms in the design of this school, we have made them eligible for state reimbursement, which otherwise they would not be had we built a standalone preschool. The Building Committee also saved time and money by opting for a shorter construction timeframe and through careful value engineering of the design of the school to maintain the educational opportunities for students while saving money where appropriate. Finally, because the timing of this project happens to coincide with historically low borrowing rates, the impact of the project on property taxes is reduced.
Let's return to the financial structure of the project. The feasibility funding is the first element of the project cost. The MSBA reimbursement is identified as the maximum possible grant because the MSBA will review our project to see if the project, as executed, still qualifies for the maximum reimbursement. The A.B.RSD share, $78 million, is apportioned 85% to Acton and 15% to Boxborough according to the enrollment of each town and the capital provisions of the regional agreement. On the next slide, we'll look more closely at the impact on taxes. The actual cost of borrowing will not be known until the bonds are issued early next year. The Debt Subcommittee developed the tax impact estimate based on an interest rate assumption of 3% and considered that the bonds could be issued for a 25- or 30-year term. If interest rates are higher or lower by a quarter of a percent, the tax rate for the median family home in Acton would change by $14. What happens if the project is not approved? If either Town Meeting in Acton or Boxborough should decide not to support this project, the first step of the Building Committee will be to determine why there was a lack of support and whether or not the article should be brought back to the citizens within the MSBA-prescribed timeframe. If that fails, we will have lost the MSBA contribution of $38 million and likely any MSBA support for a number of years. As you've seen in the video, we'll need to make investments in the Douglas building while a new plan is formulated. These repairs will be sunk costs and have no value once a new building is put in place. Lincoln failed to support an elementary school proposal in 2012 with the consequence that MSBA funding was lost and the burden on taxpayers increased by tens of millions of dollars as Lincoln was forced to go it alone. If we support the article, we will have leveraged our position in the MSBA building queue to replace not one, but three outdated, inefficient, and inadequate buildings with an educational facility that will support our programs not just for the next decade, but for the next half-century. Please join the School Committee in voting to support Article One.
Thank you. Do the Board of Selectmen have a position? Oh. Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Select Board, as Superintendent Light explained, agree that there's been a lengthy and very inclusive process which brought us to this point to consider the warrant article before Town Meeting tonight. It began some four years ago with a master plan that included community, master plan process that included community forums and visiting sessions to identify alternative solutions which the community most supports. The School Committee then appointed a 19-member School Building Committee, which, after studying the various alternatives, determined that replacing the Douglas and Gates buildings with a new twin school on the Gates sites is the most educationally and financially appropriate solution. Select Board agrees that Gates and Douglas buildings have reached the end of the building's useful lives and no longer adequately serve the educational needs of students for accessibility, special needs services, and the students' health and welfare. The Select Board also recognizes that since the 1960s, requirements for providing appropriate educational services for students who have special needs and English-language learning needs have increased significantly. State law now requires that school districts provide education services for preschool students who have special needs. The Building Committee voted to include the preschool in a new twin school because the current preschool facility at the administration building is inadequate, because educationally sound reasons support including preschoolers with elementary students, and because including the preschool allowed for MSBA reimbursement, whereas building a totally separate preschool would not be reimbursed. So let me address the cost-benefit analysis of this warrant article. Certainly, building the new school is expensive, an estimated $450 to $500 per year added to the average single-family home tax bill. That cost is mitigated as J.D.'s... That cost is mitigated, as Jason Cole explained somewhat, by the fact that a portion of Acton's debt service will be paid off over the next few years. Only 25% of Acton households have children who attend Acton schools. So why should you support this article if you don't have children in the schools? There's at least three good reasons. First, the schools provide amenities to the entire town, which enrich our community: arts and music programs, community education, sports, and public use of the facilities, not to mention that a superior school system generally increases property values throughout the town. Second, this town meeting has stepped up to support the needs of Acton senior citizens by appropriating funds to build the new senior center, by funding $250,000 for the senior tax abatement program, and by funding the senior work program, among other initiatives. Third, the district's metrics compete with comparable districts. AB's attendance and graduation rates, performance on standardized tests, and percents of students who go on to higher education all match up with comparable districts, while AB's per-pupil cost is 12% lower than similar districts. Thanks to the efforts of our outstanding teachers, staff, and administrators, AB provides a superior education while operating in an efficient, cost-effective manner. The bottom line is that one of society's principal responsibilities is to educate our youth. Maintaining our vital democracy requires engaged, informed, and involved citizens. This article will provide the facility needed to educate the next two generations of Acton students to the high standards that the town has always supported. And for all these reasons, the Select Board voted unanimously to recommend that town meeting members vote yes on Article I.
Thank you. Next, before we move on, I'd just like to thank all the people who did make the move. So much cozier. There are more seats over on this side, in case anybody else does come in. In a second. We will now move to hearing from the members. I know there is a member who wishes to speak, and before that, I will speak and then you won't speak. That would come under the time that you... It's part of the... What is your point of order? Could the people up there turn on microphone three, please? There you go.
Mr. Berry said that the vote of the Board of Selectmen was unanimous. I do not believe that is true.
Actually, that was my mistake. There was one abstention.
Thank you.
To be accurate.
Okay. Now, we will move to hear from the town meeting members. If you wish to speak against the article, please come over to this side. If you are in favor, please come to this side. If you have a question, you may go to any microphone. Mr. Nichelm and I have spoken already, and first I will make a statement, and then we'll hear from you. Town meeting members should know that there is a process to be included on the agenda with a con presentation, and in fact, we will hear one on the sewer article, that includes that part of that process is intending a public, posted meeting the week prior to town meeting, a well-established practice that has been going on for at least a decade. It is my understanding that the speaker is aware of this process and did not participate. Therefore, I was not willing to grant his request for privileges beyond other meeting members. However, it is my understanding that the speaker has prepared a presentation, a con presentation on the school article, and the meeting, if the meeting would like to hear from him, I would entertain a motion. Motion first.
Self-vote.
And a second. Okay. It has been moved and seconded to hear a con presentation of 10 minutes. All who are in favor, this would require a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I believe the nays have it. You may still have the normal limit for speakers from the floor.
A ballot, a ballot vote with the clickers, please.
It was quite clear.
Okay, I withdraw. Can I show my slides?
If you can include it in the two minutes, do we have, could we put the slides up? And you are speaking con, so you probably want to... Oh, all right. Please put two minutes.
And let me make sure I can do this properly. This is a pointer. I just want to say I'm very disappointed that town meeting does not want to hear a con presentation. This is sort of outrageous to me. This is a $120 million project, and you only want to hear one side of the story. It's really crazy. We're looking at a $15,000 average single-family tax bill in just a few years. That's how I calculated the number. This is a Field of Dreams proposal. Are we really going to expect to get a whole bunch of new students here, according to their latest projections, which I've just seen tonight for the first time? Are we going to see all those students when people are moving in to a $15,000 a year tax bill? I just don't see it happening. The enrollment figures I used were from 2017, and the current enrollment is on the red line. That's 2020 enrollment. It actually looks like it's going down, not going up. I believe we only need five elementary schools, not six. And the way I determined this is I looked at the peak enrollment of the six elementary schools. And the key thing here is that in 2015, we added a sixth school, which is Blanchard School, and that school was about 2/3 full. So that gave us a lot of extra capacity, which Acton taxpayers are paying dearly for, and we should utilize that capacity. And if we were to move the students out of Gates and put them into the other five schools, we could easily accommodate the current enrollment and future enrollment. We right now have 700 spaces based on maximum enrollment. This is the information the schools use to determine that they're overcapacity. And here's the Douglas school. They claim the capacity is 270, which is ridiculous. We've never had that few people in school, that few students. We could save $1 million a year if we vote for a school which is a single school, not a twin school.
Your time has expired.
Can you give me another extra 30 seconds, please? No? Definitely not.
Are there any other speakers wishing to address the question? You may approach the microphone again after other speakers who have spoken, which I... Okay, thank you, sir. And just as a note, we do have some folks in overflow, so after we hear from any people here, we'll go over there if there are any. Microphone four.
Question, Scott Smires, 382 Central Street. There was a section in the presentation about the net zero standards. Is this a requirement from the MSBA? And if so, what was the analysis? In other words, we have to, it sounds very important to meet the qualifications for the MSBA, but I assume that that's tied to certain, what are the qualifications? You didn't get into the details of what that is. So I'm looking for someone to tell me if the MSBA requires solar panels, geothermal wells, rainwater collection systems, and how much that would cost compared to how much we're getting from them, which is actually our own tax dollars coming back to us. It's not really free money.
Is there someone who can answer the question? Mr. Light.
So first, thank you very much. That's a great question. So it is not an MSBA requirement to go with what we're, it's called a triple-net-zero project. That was a local decision made by our community through the building project process and the building committee before you. The cost all-in for the triple-net-zero features are about $3.5 million, 3.2 of which is the largest chunk, which is dedicated to the geothermal wells, as well as the two electric boilers. As we said before, we've reduced the cost by incorporating the boilers. That reduced the costs of that by about $500,000. In addition, we worked with our architect and engineering firms to conduct a return-on-investment analysis, and those costs actually return on investment beginning in year 16. So it's a 50-year project. We were totally paid off on those costs in year 16 of it, and at that point, we're actually seeing a return on investment from the rest of the life of the building. The rainwater collection similarly has a return on investment. That changes whether or not we continue with the septic program or we go with the sewer system. So there's still a little bit of uncertainty in terms of the exact return on investment. That's a much smaller amount. That's about $500,000. But given that the town had real significant concerns around conservation, particularly around water, we wanted to incorporate that into the design of the project. That was debated within the building committee because we wanted to make sure we made a sound decision, but ultimately, the building committee was strongly in favor of moving that process forward.
Okay, thank you.
Speaker at microphone one.
Hi, I'd like to make a prostatement and ask a question, if it's okay?
Could you introduce yourself?
Yes, Andrew Roberts, 87 Hammond Street.
You may use two minutes, however you see fit.
Wonderful. So I'd like to state in favor of the, at least the combined school option. My children are both attendees at McCarthy Town School, and I speak very highly of the experience of having the two schools combined. There are a lot of advantages to it, and so I appreciate you guys' decision to do that. My question is, what is the maximum intended enrollment of the new school relative to the current schools? This is all three of them that are now being combined. And is that supportive of the intended demand associated with the long-range master plan of the surrounding area, including population density changes in West Acton that may occur due to sewerage plans planned for the area? Thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
The planned capacity for the new school is 990 students, and that's based on the MSBA guideline of a class size of 23. So one of the complexities in talking about capacity in terms of students is we build classrooms, but we have a variable number of students in them. One of the ways in which we accommodated the peak class sizes before was to allow class sizes to rise as high as 28 students, something I, of course, hope we will never see again. I think in terms of where the population will be, the building, you know, is designed like the Gates and Douglas schools were when they were built in the 60s to have a 50-year lifespan. And so I think the projection about what will happen to enrollment over that 50 years is challenging, but I would expect to see the peaks and troughs that we've historically seen. But we project no particular impact associated with the new school, and it was noted in some of the discussions that when Parker Damon was built, people thought, oh, well, we'll get a much heavier enrollment in Parker Damon because it's a new building. And that didn't happen even with, obviously, the people in town having school choice.
So essentially, a flat population with peaks and valleys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Speaker at microphone two.
Hi, my name is Corinne Hogseth. I live on Seminole Road. All three of my kids went to Douglas, and I know, I'm very well aware of the physical condition. I wish a plan had been put forth that I felt like I could support. But I feel like if we had asked a question at the beginning saying, what, if we were starting from scratch, what would be billed? I don't think we would cluster our schools and the locations the way we have, that basically stretched from, you know, part of Route 2 all the way up 111 to the Blanchard School. We're taking away the option of neighborhood schools for most of the town. And I, you know, a couple of people have mentioned, the speakers have mentioned, we want this building to last for 50 years, and I feel like you're locking us in for another 50 years of this open enrollment plan and taking away the option of neighborhood schools. I'm also very concerned about the assessment formula. The numbers that have been put up show that the Acton homeowners will be paying, on average, about 44% more per year than the Boxborough homeowners. The formula has been broken since the outset. Concerns were raised about that at the time we voted for regionalization. They have not been addressed. I feel like they should be before we lock ourselves into $78 million of debt. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone three.
Good evening. My name's Christina Richlick. I live at 7 Captain Forbush Lane, and I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters Acton Area, which I will refer to as the League. The League includes the towns of Acton, Boxborough, Littleton, Mater, and Stowe, and is a nonpartisan, grassroots organization that supports and opposes issues, but not candidates or political parties. We take a stand on local issues when they align with our active local program positions. In this case, our local education position specifically states that we support buildings, classrooms, and other abilities that are healthy, safe, and well-maintained. Likewise, our local education funding of schools position states that the school committee and administration should actively seek money from the state and federal governments with the following reservations: There should be a need among the students for the program, and the long-range financial impact to the town should be considered. The criteria for the League taking a position on a local education proposal require that the proposal be a clearly formulated plan, be financially feasible, include alternatives, and be for the benefit of students, rather than for the ease of administration. The proposed new Douglas and Gates school building is designed to replace two overcrowded, severely aging, and non-ADA-compliant schools, while consolidating preschool classrooms as well. The school district has worked openly, methodically, and creatively throughout this process over many years. An exhausting evaluation of alternative models and solutions has been undertaken. Replacing two elementary school buildings and the preschool program for the total cost of $117.3 million shows attention to fiscal responsibility, as well as to the urgency of the needs of our students. We are particularly concerned about what may happen if this vote fails in either town. Our towns will lose the state funding yet desperately still need new schools. Many years of work by our administration, town officials, and building committee volunteers will be lost, and new schools for our students, if at all possible, will be further delayed...
Your time has expired. Thank you. Mr. Mullen, are there any speakers in the gymnasium wishing to speak?
At this time, Madam Moderator.
None at... Okay, thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
Thank you. I have a question. Is it correct that the new school will not require a sewer?
So the school building committee has designed the school to operate on a septic system, as was required by MSBA. It reserves an option to hook up for the school, but it is not a requirement for the project to proceed forward.
Is it also true that if a sewer were available, the school building committee would have to take a vote and make a decision whether or not to hook up to it? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Speaker at microphone one.
Sean Jennings, Elm Street. I have a lot of positive things I want to say, and especially to the, to the building committee and everyone here. It's been a very nice, open, and, you know, transparent process the whole way. But what got me here was really thinking about, listening to the arguments pro and for, against, and in reference to the most recent con presentation we had, and some of the other arguments as far as, you know, the hitting the brakes at this point, you know, late in the game. It's, it's very much, you know, the, the data that was shown there was just, was cherry-picked and not on the actual most recent data. It was from earlier, and it was from, and it was showing peak times in 90s, early 2000s. And so I would be, I would be a little pessimistic to believe that sort of projection on cherry-pick data. And also, just as far as the amount of time it takes to put this together, that to come up right now and try to come up with, you know, alternative plans or wildly different plans, it's, it would come at a cost of time, the money that we're getting from the state. And anytime we put a plan together, there could always be a rather radical, you know, change in plans when it comes to vote. But yeah, I would be happy to hear, you know, how, how this data that we saw differs from 2015 and the Acton 2020 planning, when we were using 2009 data from the stock market crash and the underwater... crash and the underwater housing market to make projections for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
I just wanted to respond to that last speaker. We did not hear a con presentation tonight. He said that we heard one, and we have not heard one. And second of all, he said, you know, I sort of get the feeling that something was sprung or last minute or whatever. My information, which I tried to present tonight and was unable to, was shared with the school committee in 2017, with Dr. Brand, with members of the school committee, and I told them, as a taxpayer, I would not be in favor of voting for an override with enrollment dropping. Now miraculously, enrollment, we were told, is supposed to turn around. I just don't believe it. If we have a $15,000 a year tax bill, I don't think we're going to have enrollment turning around like they predict. So you have not heard a con presentation, and this information was available to the school committee in plenty of time for them to incorporate it. Unfortunately, when the school committee made this proposal, they did it...
Your mic is still on. The red light is on. Whoops, back to the red light. Please turn on microphone two. Thank you.
What I was going to say is, the school committee put this proposal together using what they call stakeholders, and these are teachers, students, members of the school committee, staff, et cetera. Town meeting is for taxpayers. This is where taxpayers get to decide what their tax bills are going to be going into the future. So it's up to you to decide if you want to be spending $15,000 a year on your tax bill. And if people want to spend that, that's fine. Just be aware of what you're doing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Lawrence Roberts. I live on Windsor Avenue. I am one of the few people, I imagine, here who knew Bill O'Connell and R.J. Gray, who helped set the Acton school system in the direction that it's had over the last half century. I profited from being in the school system my entire life, and my two sons did, and our two granddaughters did. So I am somewhat prejudiced. I look around the room, and I see a number of people who have the same hair color as I do. And I imagine that they are here quite concerned about the potential cost. I also know that the value of the home that we live in and have loved all these years is very much impacted by the quality of the schools that all the people here are working hard to prefer, to preserve. I think one of the things that is unfair or incorrect about looking at the projected enrollment is that because there are so many people in here with my hair color, we unfortunately will eventually leave the town of Acton one way or another. And, and when we do, those houses are going to become open for people with children. And you know that there is a huge backlog of people who would very much like to move into Acton because of the quality of the schools and the cost-effectiveness of the schools in Acton. And I think we need to be prepared for when those people show up. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
Thank you. Scott Myers from Central Street. Both my children went to Douglas School. My wife went to Douglas School. I went to Blanchard School, and my heart remains in Boxborough. But it's very simple to me. I'm going to vote no on this because a couple of years ago, the school committee lost my confidence. It's a simple reason right there. We all know what happened with the former superintendent, and if, and I also will not vote for an override on Proposition 2 and 1/2. I don't think that the leadership is responsible with our money, and that's very simple to me. So I hope somebody else will consider that, too, when they're voting today. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Hi, I'm Paulette Stout on Woodchewes Drive. Wow, that's loud. I had two students go through Douglas, and they had great experiences despite the limited learning environment. Those of us who were there at the time will remember the fight we had about getting the new trailer approved so that we didn't have to have children sitting in moldy environments that had been cleaned twice and it was recurring. It's expensive. It is expensive, but I do believe it's the right thing to do, and I'm saying that as someone with a graduating senior and no children coming back. More time for kayaking, but I do think we need to support our schools, and I believe really strongly this is the right decision. We showed the nice video with Dr. Whitbeck, not the one where he was climbing over pipes in the back of the school. So I think we got the cleaned-up version. The schools are tied, spent a lot of time at Gates. Gates is an even more dire situation in many ways than Douglas, so I do hope that we can support the schools. It's important for us, for the town, for the long term, and to get the matching funds is, will reduce the tax burden in the long run than if we vote no now and come back and lose that funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Hi, I'm Rajesh. I'm on 3 Martha Lane. I had a couple of questions. My, my first question was, could you please give us an honest-to-goodness assessment of the impact of current students in Gates? I mean, for crying out loud, you're asking families with students in Gates today to have two-plus years, two years if everything goes right, of having repairs in place. So the noise, the dust, the disruption, right? So that was my one question. And the other question was, could you also talk about, you keep talking about the $38 million as if it's in the bag, but I saw no scenario or no contemplation of, what are the chances of us getting all of that money, and what happens if we don't?
Mr. Lloyd or Mr. Peterson?
So thank you for those two questions. To the first question regarding the impact on Gates students, there certainly is always an impact on students during construction, and we know that's the case. We've begun work with our project manager and architect to start to address those issues, and that work would continue as soon as we sign our construction manager to their contract. That was also a very high priority for us in the bids that we put out to our construction managers, was the ability to mitigate the impact on current students. In order to do that, we know that there will be an impact on traffic coming in and out of the school because it's a restricted site. Construction vehicles will be entering and exiting from the Arlington Street side, and they will be restricted to non-bus times in effect, so that they're not trying to come in at the same time as parent drop-off or bus drop-off in the morning and afternoon. In terms of mitigating the impact on students, we actually, to construct this project, have to remove the four classrooms closest to the new proposed building in order to do that. The classrooms get removed. That would happen this summer. In its place is constructed a new wall using a specially acoustically-treated material that also does not have windows. The contract manager is also required to have dust mitigation strategies in place for the duration of the project, and the air quality is continuously monitored throughout that time.
Could you talk about the impact to the playground as well?
Sure. There is an impact to the backside of the playground, but we also have opportunities to relocate that. We can also make sure that we maintain the walkway over to the Douglas side in order for students to be able to access large field areas. The distance from the Douglas side to the Gates side is the same as traveling the distance in the Parker Damon lot, so it's also an option for our students during the construction. On the second question, if I could just have you...
I can, I can do it.
Do you want to do that one? Sorry, I just want to have you...
So I, I wanted to be clear about the MSBA reimbursement being, having a certain uncertainty to it, because they do audit the project at the end, and there could be some change. Like any large project, this project has contingencies. Those contingencies are sufficient to address the kind of changes that might occur during the MSBA audit.
So what does that really mean?
So essentially, our project has several million dollars in contingencies. The MSBA grant is a maximum facilities grant. Some of that, about $1.5 to $2 million of that, is contingent on our need to use our contingency money. So in other words, if our project comes in as it was budgeted and we don't need to use our contingencies, essentially, MSBA is saying, look, we're not going to give you money that you don't end up needing. So there, there is, you know, I think probably a likelihood that there's some percentage of that contingency, but it's probably to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars, I would, I would estimate.
Can I make a comment?
You may make a comment.
Just, just so that I'm clear, for the reasons that there will be impact to existing students, it will be for an extended period, I'm not comfortable with the mitigation strategies that you have proposed, and you haven't convinced me about the MSBA grant. I am a no vote. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone one.
Well, I, just to respond to that, I don't know what one can do if one has to construct on the same side as students or...
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jean Hobby. I live in 11 Old Seri Drive in Acton. I don't know what one would do if, I mean, the students are there and the school needs to be built there, and it's, it's unfortunate, it's not ideal. Nobody thinks that's ideal. I also want to thank everybody who's worked very hard on, on looking at all the choices. I don't pretend to be a financial expert or understand everything you have said either, but even though my daughter is aging out of the school system and we don't have young ones coming in, I understand that providing good educational spaces for children, and in particular, I know this from personal experience, is extremely crucial for how the children will thrive, and that's all kinds of children. So it may seem like a great deal of money, but this is what good spaces for education cost now. And even though only 25% of us have children in the school system, I feel like we all owe it to our families and to the children who live here to do the best that we can for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
Bob Miller, 84 Windsor Avenue. I'd like to call the question.
There is a mo, there is a motion and a second to cut off debate. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion does carry. So there should be a picture of the clicker. Yes, there we go. So we're getting ready to vote, so first, turn on, don't smush it too hard. Are we ready? Not yet. We are ready. The voting window is open? Oh, I am so sorry. If your yea vote is yes, you want the school project as described. Nay vote, letter E as in elephant, means you are against the project. A for, oh, and if you wish to abstain, you can press any of the other buttons. Okay, voting is now closed? No? Oh, it's going up. I, I'm sorry. Let us begin again. I'll get the hang of this yet. Okay.
It's open nicely.
I thought I did. Sorry. Okay. If you are in favor, and I'll say open in a sec, if you are in favor, press a. If you are opposed, press e. If you wish to abstain, you may press any other. Your last vote will be recorded. Let us open the voting window. It's not? It should say ready. Your little screen should say ready, and then you'll get a check mark once you've We, do we have an issue? Let us keep the voting open. I think we're still checking a couple of clickers here. Okay, one moment while the tellers fetch a different device. Could the person put their, thank you. Is everyone all set? Are there any others who are having any trouble? Mr. Mullen, is the overflow working all right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Mortarida, we have just closed the vote in this room.
Thank you. Are we all set now? Any other? The motion clearly meets the two-thirds margin and does pass. So there's about a half hour till the babysitters turn into pumpkins, so let's see what we can do in that half hour. I'll read the whole motion. Is there anybody else coming down, or just you? If you are choosing to leave, please do so quietly so we can continue on with the meeting. Our neighbors in Boxborough also voted yes. Alrighty, let's keep going. Article two. Yes, point of order. Can we have the sound a little bit louder? I can't do anything about that, but perhaps the controllers in the control room, is this getting louder? Okay. Is that okay? Especially now that we have less sound? Okay, Article two. North Acton Fire Station Design and Construction. Mr. Charter moves that the town appropriate $9,194,548 to be expended by the town manager to design, construct, equip, and furnish a new fire station to be located at 66 to 68 Harris Street, including all costs incidental and related thereto. And further, that the meet, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow the appropriated amount pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, provided, however, that this approval shall be contingent upon passage of a Proposition 2 and 1/2 debt exclusion referendum under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 29C-K. And further, and provided further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to the borrowed, to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded. Mr. Charter, to your motion, you have, I believe, 10 minutes.
Good evening. My name is Dean Charter, and I will be presenting the proposed North Acton Fire Station on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. To get folks aligned when I start to work through the slides, please note that all the maps will show north to the upper right of the screen. Acton's fire department started as three separate call departments with unmanned stations located in the major villages in town. The three present fire stations are still located in those villages, with Station 1 in Acton Center, Station 2 in South Acton, and Station 3 in West Acton. That alignment of stations worked well when the stations were built in the 1950s and 1960s, when they reflected the population and commercial centers of town. When the newest of the stations was built in the early 1960s, Acton's total population was 7,500. There was very little development north of Acton Center. Our population is now approaching 23,000, with most growth in the last 25 years occurring north of Great Road. And this map here shows basically the dark blue and purple colors show all of the most recent growth, and as you can see, it is in North Acton. Starting in the early 1970s, it was apparent that growth was shifting to the north end of town, and initially that growth was centered along Great Road, including Nagog Woods and the many apartments and condos along the state highway. Somewhat more recently, single-family home subdivisions such as North Brier and Canterbury Hill Road were established further north, as well as more dense developments such as the Robins Brook Assisted Living Development and the Avalon Apartments at the end of Nagog Park Drive. As a result of this growth, there were 1,251 calls for service to the fire department in 2018, just in North Acton, out of a total of 5,300 calls for service townwide. In 2006, a study confirmed the need for a fire station in North Acton, and in 2016, a needs assessment established the parcel at 68 Harris Street to be well-located for a fire station, and in 2018, town meeting approved funding for the design of a fire and EMS station at 68 Harris Street. The Insurance Services Office, ISO, is the rating bureau that establishes in part your homeowner fire insurance rates. ISO recommends that the first due engine company should be within 1 1/2 miles of every location in the response area shown in the inner green circles, and that the first due ladder truck should be within 2 1/2 miles, shown in the outer blue circles. With the present deployment of stations, most areas of North Acton are well outside this guideline. With the new station 68 Harris Street, the majority of North Acton will be within the guideline. By operating a total of four stations, as the Board of Selectmen have voted to do, the vast majority of Acton will also be in compliance with this guideline. Quick response to fires and medical emergencies is essential to saving life and property. In 2016, a consultant modeled the present response time and the projected response time if a new station was built on Harris Street. The color coding shows green to signify two-minute travel time, yellow to signify a three-to-four-minute travel time, the orange a five-to-six-minute travel time, and the red to show a travel time in excess of six minutes. Now note here that most of the large white areas are conservation lands. All travel times are under ideal conditions and do not include turnout time, nor do they include situations where the closest responder is already on another call, which happens on average about 17 times a month. Orwin roadways are blocked by storm debris, as happened on Main Street a few weeks ago. Thus, actual response times now to some areas of North Acton can exceed 11 minutes. This slide shows the projected response times with the new station, which, as you can see, eliminates most all of the red areas and creates a much safer situation for the folks in North Acton. Our proposal is to construct a new fire station at 68 Harris Street and to split the presently oversized District 1 into a smaller District 1 and a new District 4 in North Acton, which should equalize call volumes and improve response times. All districts support and supplement one another, but moving the apparatus and personnel to North Acton will provide a much higher level of service to that area. By maintaining the three present stations, response time to the rest of town should not be impacted. As noted earlier, we expect that new District 4 station will be first response to about one-quarter of all calls for service in Acton. The new fire station will be a single-story building located on the site of the old Fisheries and Wildlife Office on Harris Street. The building will be approximately 12,300 square feet, and it will be built to 21st Century standards, and is expected to suffice for 50 years. The building has been designed with extra space to house more personnel in the future, either as the departments are expanded or on a temporary basis as the three older stations are renovated at some time in the future. Importantly, the station will include state-of-the-art decontamination and gear storage areas to protect our firefighters from the carcinogens they are exposed to. The need for this has become obvious based on the high rate of documented cases of occupational cancer among first responders. Initially, it will house the ladder truck, an engine, a boat, a utility vehicle, and other apparatus, and will also house two firefighter EMTs redeployed from other stations. Moving the ladder truck to this location makes sense because it is frequently used along Great Road and in North Acton. The ladder truck is presently situated in South Acton because that's the only station large enough to accommodate it. There is no plan this year to hire additional personnel or purchase more apparatus to operate the station. You may note from the plan that does not show an ambulance in the station initially. It's important to note that all pieces of apparatus are equipped with a range of life support equipment, and all firefighters are trained as either EMTs or paramedics. The first responders, regardless of what piece of apparatus they're on, will evaluate, stabilize, and begin treatment to the patient, and the responding ambulance will transport the patient. In addition to the operational features of the station, it has been designed to be sustainable. Heat will be provided by geothermal wells. This sort of HVAC system has been installed at the Watertown Police Station, the Nantucket Police Station, and the Holden Public Safety Building, and is also what is proposed for the new Gates and Douglas Twin School. The building will be solar-ready, is designed to minimize interior lighting requirements by maximizing natural lighting, and will not be connected in natural gas. These features are considered best practices and are consistent with the Board of Selectmen's sustainability policy approved last year. The plan respects the existing setbacks to wetlands and is the reuse of an existing site. We've also looked at the impact of the building on the neighborhood and have had a traffic study performed. The plan includes a sidewalk connection to the existing sidewalks on Harris Street, which presently ends at Alexandra Way, and to the eventual sidewalk network on Main Street. The proposed total project cost is $10,343,376. In August, the proposed total project cost was over $12 million. The cost has been reduced through deleting administrative offices and reducing the footprint of the building through a stringent value engineering process. We think we have a state-of-the-art but modest building. We're going to access almost $400,000 in mitigation payments from the Avalon Project, and we have the initial appropriation from the 2018 town meeting. We propose to borrow $9,194,548 on a 30-year debt exclusion, which will require a two-thirds majority vote tonight and a simple majority at the ballot on Tuesday, December 17. The estimated cost of the average home in Acton will be $62 to $67 per year. We ask for your support.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a position?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The town of Acton is in need of another fire station. As Selectmen Charter has demonstrated, population density in North Acton has dramatically increased over the past 10 years. This is an issue of safety. Fire stations are a basic necessity in a community, and it's important for every citizen to get the same essential services from the town. That said, the financial impact to the town should not be overlooked. Although the Finance Committee wishes costs were lower, we recognize that construction costs have gone up steeply since the town approved the design phase two town meetings ago. The Finance Committee is quite cognizant of the financial ask of the town during this period. Concerns within the Finance Committee include the timing of the project. Although some wish we had done this project 10 years ago, we don't want to be saying the same thing 10 years from now. Some question the necessity of a fire station over an ambulance outstation, and some question the need for the overall size of the station, though acknowledge that we should not necessarily mess with safety. The trajectory of construction costs continues to go up, although the Finance Committee does recognize that costs tend to decline if we were to face an economic downturn. It's very difficult to predict what the future brings, but it's also difficult to say that we should be market-timing the safety of our citizens. As to why we should do this project right now, in the aggregate, we believe that the single greatest argument is the currently low interest rates on long-term borrowing in the face of rising construction costs. Borrowing costs are at near historic lows. With all that, the Finance Committee overwhelmingly, but not unanimously, recommends this article.
Thank you. Are there town meeting members wishing to speak?
Just to remind you, if you want to speak, we can come up to the microphone, and then we'll contact the other room and make a connection.
Okay, we have a couple people in here, and then we'll head over to the gym. Speaker at microphone one.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Janet Adachi, Simon Halfgood Lane. I am speaking, let me get my glasses on. I'm speaking on behalf of the Acton Area League of Women Voters, as you heard earlier tonight from my league colleague Christina Richlich during the Twin Schools discussion. The Acton Area League includes the towns of Acton, Boxborough, Littleton, Maynard, and Stowe, and is a nonpartisan grassroots organization. The League supports local government that is responsive to the needs of the community, is accountable, and provides for long-range planning. We therefore commend the town for its efforts over many years, decades, to evaluate via multiple studies the public safety needs for a fire station in North Acton, to examine different potential sites, and to inform the public and invite public input. The town's extended efforts confirm the need for a North Acton station and the suitability of the Harris Street site. Voters at 2018 Annual Town Meeting approved funding for design services for Harris Street Station. The result was a detailed building design and site plan that in recent months residents have had an opportunity to learn about at public forums, as well as via presentations to various town committees. The new Harris Street Fire Station will serve the town and enhance public safety for years to come. The project is the culmination of years of hard work by many. We thank all for their collective contributions. The Acton Area League supports Article 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Paul Stoudak, Watchuzah Drive. Just had a question. You spoke about the slower response times for North Acton, but can you speak to the consequences of the slower response times? Have there been severely negative safety outcomes from those response times?
Mr. Charter.
The, I can't speak to specific instances. I know that fire does spread very quickly, especially in newer construction, and in some areas of North Acton, the response times for emergency medical on occasion has been as long as 15 minutes, which is a very long time for somebody that needs CPR. I can certainly defer to the fire chief for some more details on that.
If the fire chief could respond? Go ahead.
So as far as the negative impacts, it's difficult with tracking medical-type stuff. Nobody wants their medical information scattered across the newspaper, so we don't track that data because it's just not something that the average citizen should know about. But as Dean alluded to, longer response times are just negative to everything, fire, medical, and just calls for assistance. So we don't have specific data, but it's not good.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Hi, I'm Prakash. I live in Canterbury Hill Road. In the map, it's that deep red area. So I did see that, and my wife, who's a healthcare professional, couldn't be here. She saw that, and she saw the response times, and she said, "I'm not allowed back home if this vote doesn't go through today." But, you know, to paraphrase, it's what the fire marshals said, it's not good. Those response times are not good. So let's not wait for a fatality or multiple fatalities before we act on this. And it's a North Acton fire station, but it's not just impacting North Acton. If someone is in North Acton, there's an emergency in the other parts of the town, they're going to be affected as well. So let's not think it's a North Acton project. Let's do what's right for the town overall and vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
Carol Sherpashin, Helsworth Village Road. At the meeting, the town meeting in which the design money was approved, Chief Hart said that he would ask for hiring eight firefighters. And he was asked about the cost, and he said it'd be about $600,000 a year. That's probably salaries. If you add benefits and pension liabilities, that'd be a million dollars a year, or thereabouts. So now we're hearing that there'd be a redeployment. So I'd like to know for sure what the plan is on staffing the fire station.
Yes, Mr. Charter.
At this time, there is no plan to add firefighters or more apparatus. That being said, when the Town of Acton Fire Department achieved its present staffing was in, I believe, 1988, when the population town was about 17,500. So certainly the town has grown. Certainly, there's going to be pressure to enhance our response capabilities, regardless of whether a fourth station is built. One town meeting cannot bind a future town meeting. One Board of Selectmen cannot bind a future Board of Selectmen. But all I can say is, at least in the near future, meaning in the next year, we're not planning on adding or asking for any more firefighters.
So in the next year, the new fire station won't even be built? So what's going to happen after the fire station gets built?
We have sufficient staffing. We will move two existing firefighters to that station, and we can open it and operate it. Because of the way the shifts work, there will always be two firefighter EMTs on duty in that building. All of the other stations will still be staffed, it's just we're spreading them out rather than keeping them in a smaller assortment of only three stations. As I said, there is certainly a significant argument that could be made for hiring additional firefighters, regardless of whether we build a fourth station.
So does that mean there's no plan to hire eight firefighters? I mean, I'm just trying, a million dollars a year translates into $120 a year for each household. So it impacts the tax rate. Acton already has one of the highest tax rates in the state, so I'm just trying to understand what the staffing plan is, and it feels as if you're being a little evasive. I don't mean to be rude, but I'm just trying to get an answer.
The best information I can give you is that the budget that was submitted by the town manager to the Board of Selectmen last week did not include the request for any new personnel in any department.
Right, so I think you're not answering my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mellon, do we have a speaker in the gym?
Madam Moderator, no speakers standing right here right now. We're all settled in here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Grant, Jim Snyder Grant, West Acton. Also the clerk of Green Acton, and reading a statement from Green Acton. Because we find ourselves in a climate emergency, the need to slash greenhouse gas emissions is urgent. This will require electrification of all sectors, a swift This will require electrification of all sectors, a swift transition away from fossil fuels, and the conversion of electricity supply to renewables. Green Acton especially appreciates the attention paid to energy systems during the design of this building. There will be no fossil fuels piped into the building, including no methane, or what they call natural gas, which is a poisonous explosive gas that has an extremely high greenhouse gas impact as it leaks along all points along the path from production wells to distribution to buildings. The designers looked at various alternatives for heating and cooling the proposed North Acton Fire Station and found that a ground-source heat pump yields the greatest savings in operating costs and did the best job for the environment. Ground-source heat pumps take advantage of the fact that the ground beneath our feet and below the frost line stays at 55 degrees year-round. These systems use a heat transfer liquid similar to those used in refrigerators and air-conditioning systems, as well as some electricity from the grid, to keep buildings at year-round comfortable temperatures with a high degree of efficiency. The lower operating cost compared to a fossil-fuel system pays back the higher construction cost in fewer than 12 years. Because repayment of the loan for this project is spread out over 30 years, using a ground-source heat pump is cash-flow positive immediately. Green Acton celebrates the clear thinking that has led to this choice of heating and cooling system and recommends the use of fossil-free heating and cooling in all new buildings. Given the increasing risk of brushfires due to the impacts of the climate crisis, Green Acton also appreciates the reduced response times the new station location offers for North Acton residents. Many North Acton residents live in multi-unit buildings which can make emergency evacuations more challenging. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Alan Nichelm, Nine Marion Road. I'm an agnostic on this particular issue. I think that Selectman Charter did an excellent presentation. I've been hearing about the fire station for many, many years. But I am, of course, a proponent for con presentations, and I noticed that there is no con presentation tonight. And another speaker got up at microphone four and asked a very important question. What is the long-term personnel requirements of a new station? And she reported that we had been told at a previous town meeting that it would need eight people to fully staff the station, which is a million dollars a year. So you can be sure that in the future, that will be fully staffed. So the reason I'm up today at the con microphone is not to talk about the specific issue, but to ask a question to the Finance Committee. And my question, very simply, is I'd like each person who did not vote yes on this article to tell town meeting why. Thank you.
Would the Finance Committee care to respond to the question? I think you have about 30 seconds, Mr. Nichelm.
If a Finance Committee member is going to vote no at their committee meeting, which is a public meeting, and then they won't come to town meeting and defend their vote, that is outrageous, and they should resign. What the hell do we have people on the Finance Committee for?
I think your points are getting out of order.
Okay.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Good evening. Mike Gowing, 93 Harris Street. I guess what this is really about is response time. Fire doubles in size every 30 seconds. Brain death, or somebody corrected me on that, a nurse corrected me, but hypoxia starts to develop at four minutes. That means your brain is without oxygen and starts to decay. If this is the largest growth area of town, because it's got the largest land area that's not currently built out, it's likely that this is going to continue. Right now, a quarter of all the calls are going to North Acton. They're taking an inordinate long time to get there, no offense, chief, but it's just the nature of the beast. This is not to increase the size of the fire department, it's to redeploy the fire department in a location that makes sense. Thank you.
Speaker at microphone two.
This is Anping Liu at Monument Place. I have a question about the build cost. So I read the news, you know, Westford just finished a new fire station last year. They build a 19,572 square foot for $8.7 million. So average cost is $440 per square foot. But for ours is 12,500 square foot, which, and 10.3 million, the average cost is $840 per square foot. So we almost doubled Westford, you know, build cost. So are we too rich? So that's my question. Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead.
That's a perfect example of why this should have been done 10 years ago. The simple fact is that costs of construction have gone up astronomically. On the one hand, we've got an excellent bonding situation, but on the other hand, we have unusually high construction costs, which are probably never going to go down. During the process of the design, there have been two separate cost estimates done, and those cost estimates were peer-reviewed. We feel we have a good number. We feel it's not an excessive building. The features that we have in this building are very similar to the features that you'll see in the Westford Fire Station, which was recently constructed, or the Littleton Fire Station, which was recently reconstructed. So yes, indeed, the costs are very high. Yes, we should have done it 10 years ago.
Speaker at microphone three.
Tom Wolf, Sawmill Road, and yes, that is in North Acton. I would like to thank Mr. Charter for his graphs. I think that is all we needed to see, is the response time graph, the population growth graph. That is enough justification. But somebody had asked the question about, you know, what is the real impact of some of these response times? Now, I have a story of a specific incident that happened before I moved to that particular neighborhood. The house, which is directly across the street from me, burned sufficiently so that it had to be torn down and reconstructed. Again, this happened before I moved there, so I don't know all the details of that story, but that is just one example of a fire case. We also have to keep in mind, you know, the medical response times are probably even more important, and so please, even if, even if there were additional staffing involved, I would still be voting for the station. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Is it on?
Yes.
Bob Coray, Half Moon Hill. I'd just like to publicly thank whoever it was who stood up when you were downsizing the plans and kept the decontamination units. Thanks. Got to take care of our guys.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Hi, I'm Charlie Cadlake, Paul River Road. First of all, I am for the North Acton Fire Station because it's needed, was needed 10 years ago. But I have a couple of comments. With all due respect to Dean and Bob, a couple of years from now, we're going to be here hearing about the need to add staff. Redeployment, there are only two reasons why that would work. One is you have too many right now, which I don't think is the case. And second, it's a temporary situation why you rebuild other stations. But let's be realistic, and let's not play games. The million dollars a year number is correct. If you're going to have four stations fully staffed, you're going to increase the yearly budget sooner or later by a million dollars. It doesn't do much good to have new fire stations and lots of equipment without the firefighters to operate them. So if we just have two people in the North Acton Fire Station, and they're on a call, then the people from the Acton center stations have to come and so on. I also want to mention briefly this idea that we're helping the environment. Well, there's diesel fuel for the emergency generator, Jim probably knows that, but I'll be very interested in seeing how all this works out because it involves drilling 500-foot deep wells.
Your time has expired. Thank you. I believe we have a speaker in the gym.
Yes, Madam Moderator. I recognize the speaker.
I'm Madam Moderator, Alex Patrick, Sixth Row Lane. I move the previous question for a vote.
There is a motion and a second to cut off debate on this question. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, please say nay. The motion clearly carries. So if you could wield your clickers, turn them on. The question before you is whether to approve the North Acton Fire Station design and construction. If you are in favor, please vote A, and if you are opposed, please vote nay for E. And are we ready? We are ready. If you have any problem, please wave your arm. Okay? Any others? Has everyone had the opportunity to vote? I believe we have a comment from the floor on microphone three. Could we turn on microphone three, please? Thank you.
Judy Crongeal, Parker Street. Just wanted to comment for both of these articles. It really doesn't take effect, I believe, until the vote next week, so people have to get out and vote.
Yes, a good reminder to go vote next Tuesday. The motion clearly carries by the two-thirds majority required, 87 percent. Thank you. Alrighty, two down, one to go. If you still have children in the babysitting area, it is a little past nine o'clock, so you should probably get them.
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
Before Selectman Martin speaks, I'd like to make an announcement, a disclosure of possible appearance of a conflict of interest.
Yep, and just one second. Could the folks who are exiting please do so quietly, because we will carry on the meeting? Mr. Berry.
Thank you. I am a member of the South Acton Sewer District. I own a home in the district whose user fees may or may not be affected by an expansion of the sewer district in Acton to West Acton. There is an argument that if the sewer districts, if the town sewer district is expanded to include the proposed portion of West Acton, the user fees for the existing sewer users, myself included, will not increase as much as they otherwise might due to more people contributing. I have not done any independent analysis to determine the validity of that argument, although my sewer bill may be altered depending on the outcome of the vote at special town meeting on the expansion into West Acton. That financial potential has not and will not play any role in my voting to recommend or not Article Three, where ultimately my vote is just one among many voters of the special town meeting voting on Article Three, and where the minor financial interest I have, if any, is shared by a large percentage of the town, the entire sewer district. I do not see any conflict with my past or continued participation in this matter. I will vote, as I always do, on this matter in my role as a selectman based on what I believe is in the best interests of the town at large without regard to my personal circumstances and taking into account the facts that I've disclosed above. I feel that I can perform my official duties objectively and fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. This article is longer than the others, but I will still put it before you in its full form. Mr. Martin moves, A, that the town appropriate $1,900,000 for the purpose of financing the planning, design, and construction of, and expansions and modifications to sewers and the wastewater treatment plant, or any portion thereof, and related infrastructure for the expansion of the Middle Fort Pond Brook Sewer District into a portion of West Acton as shown on the plan entitled "West Acton Sewer Project, Project Area Map, Phase One, Dated December 2019, The Phase One Plan," including, without limitation, the acquisition by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, on such terms and conditions as the selectmen may determine real property interests in land as may be necessary or appropriate for the expansion shown on the Phase One Plan, and all other costs and any related expenses thereof as defined in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 29(c), Section 1. B, that to meet such appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $1,900,000 and issue bonds or notes therefore under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, and/or Chapter 29(c), or any other enabling authority. That the treasurer is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, established pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 29(c), and, in connection therewith, to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan, and for any federal or state aid available for the project for the financing thereof. That the town manager is authorized to enter into agreements with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other actions necessary to carry out the project, and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less the cost of preparing, issuing, and marketing them, and any accrued interest received upon the delivery of the bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs of the project approved by the vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed for the project by like amount. And, C, that the town shall levy sewer assessments on the owners of the land benefiting from the sewer project to pay the debt service costs on the borrowing authorized by this vote in accordance with General Bylaw, Section D10, except that up to $800,000 of the amount appropriated for the sewer project and the related debt service costs on the portion of the borrowing authorized by this vote to meet that portion of the appropriation shall be allocable to the taxpayers at large in accordance with General Bylaw, Section D10.1. Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded. Mr. Martin, to your motion, 14 minutes.
Thank you, and thank you all for staying to Article Three. So this picture here is of our wastewater treatment plant on Adams Street in South Acton. The wastewater treatment plant does an excellent job. I stopped by there this morning, and I I stopped by there this morning, and I brought you some product from the wastewater treatment plant. Now, the output from the wastewater treatment plant certainly has complex carbon molecules in it, but it has nitrogen removed, phosphorus removed, most of the organic material's been removed, and you can see it's crystal clear. It's been disinfected, and this is what we charge, discharge into the ground near the...
Take a swig.
It's not been treated for drinking, but it, you know, there are places in the world where that happens. Fortunately, we don't live in a desert, but... So this entire project, half of which we're voting on tonight, and I'll talk about that, is to expand our sewer district to West Acton. In this first phase, we're just talking about running a line to the school to support the school, and I'll talk about where and why. So first of all, we started on, well, the first mention of sewers at town meeting was in 1945. And then there was a gap, as far as I can tell from reading back, but from 1958 on, there are frequent references to sewers at town meeting. We didn't actually start a sewer project until 1997. This map on the right is, was produced by a report called the CWRMP, or Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plant, and the red areas identify the parts of Acton of high need. High need was assessed here because of the quality of the soil, the high water table, and the lot size. Smaller lot size makes it harder to put in septic systems. The area that we're talking about searing is the southern, is the southern part of that area on the far left. That's the whole area of the Village of West Acton. The other parts that are nearby, right above it, is Indian Village. A little bit to the right is the Spencer Tittle Flint area. There's also Lower Great Road on the far right, and in the way-southern part is a very small piece of very southern South Acton. When septic systems fail, they can back up or break out to the surface, or in the case of West Acton, they often silently fail, and I'll talk more about that later. Small lots and other things cause problems for when you're replacing septic systems. Small lots are a problem because usually a septic system needs to be replaced because the ground has been processing the wastewater, the soil has been processing, the wastewater is basically used up. You need to move it someplace else, and if you have a small lot, that's very difficult to do. If you have a, you know, a two-acre lot, that's often not a problem. Replacing septic systems these days, especially in West Acton, most of the systems are mounted, and I'll talk more about that. And finally, the businesses in West Acton, quite a number of them have their septic systems under the parking lots, and that will be when they fail, and septic systems always eventually fail, they will be, you know, a crisis for those businesses to replace. So the health department, this health department statistics confirm the CWRMP predictions. Basically, the vast majority of systems that have been replaced in West Acton require mounding. Now, mounding is defined as having to bring in fill for the septic system, and they can be mounted just a little bit or a lot. Half of the systems have had some sort of variance because a normal septic system wouldn't work in the replacement area. And 20 percent are advanced systems, and these are the most expensive systems and the ones that have to be monitored yearly or semi-annually. Permeable soils in West Acton are good, that makes actually things easier, but the high water table makes things bad, and so that's the big problem in West Acton. Leaching fields often sit in water for part of the year. The West Acton Sewer Action Advisory Committee put together the plans we're talking about tonight. They started a couple of years ago before I joined the committee. I've only been on the committee for about nine months. There's been a number of forums, especially this year, including the October forum that was in West Acton. We've also had other events where we've reached out to the community. In late October, we sent out betterment letters to those people in West Acton who were part of the district, and in November, we had a forum on project costs. The dark gray area here is the existing sewer district we have in Acton, and the blue area is the total area that we're proposing to expand into, and Phase One is just a part of that, which I'll get to in a minute. The sewers in West Acton and other places in town are really an investment in economic development. The businesses in West Acton are limited because of the lack of sewerage there. Restaurants can't grow the way they want to. Businesses are restricted to simple office kind of businesses. They can't have other uses, and this is particularly a problem in, not only West Acton but other parts of town because retail businesses are being replaced by online shopping, and often the service businesses that go in instead need more water and generate more wastewater. What we're proposing today is just a very simple Phase One, and just to serve the timelines of the school. It's basically, the Phase One is represented by the red squiggly line. It's just a main-down Mass Ave that turns right on Spruce Street to the school. The intent here is not to hook it up to anybody else, just the school at this time, and come back with a Phase Two that expands to the rest of the blue area or a similar area. I want to talk just a short amount of time here about betterments because, in case people aren't familiar with betterments, because I'll use the term here, and I'm sure speakers after me will also use the term. The betterments are used to pay off the construction loans for sewers. The total project cost at the end of the project is divided among the property owners by sewer betterment unit. One sewer betterment unit is assigned for a normal single-family house. If you have a smaller condo or apartment, that's two-thirds of a betterment unit. Businesses are assessed sewer betterment units based on zoning and what can be built on their lot on the zoning, not what's built at the time the betterments are issued, but what can be built. These are all by Acton bylaws, which were passed in the late 90s. The betterments are payable either all at once or over 30 years, and Acton happens to be the only community in the Commonwealth that has all betterment-supported sewers. All other communities except us support their sewers, at least partially, out of general After, especially after the October betterment letters went out and we had the forum in November based on cost, we had a lot of feedback from people that the betterment costs in the district were too high, and frankly, we agree with that. We were aiming for betterments that were close to the, about the average cost of a replacement septic system, and ours turned out a bit higher than that. So we want time to be able to figure out ways to address those costs, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. We also are delaying Phase Two and/or, conversely, doing Phase One now to support the school building, which begins construction next summer. The sewers will allow the school to have more flexible use of its property, and it connects a very large discharger of wastewater to the sewer. During the day, that building will have 1,150 people in it. That's a lot of wastewater, and so that's the reason we're proposing to do Phase One now and Phase Two later. Also, the sooner we get going on schools, sewers, the better that it is for costs. We have delayed since 1958 a lot of the sewers, and it's cost us dearly. There was one time where the federal government would have paid 90 percent of our sewer costs. What we propose to do moving forward is to have a conversation about our betterment bylaws and the scope of Phase Two. Our betterment bylaws, as I mentioned, not only restrict us to having all betterment-supported sewers, but they also force each district to pay for its own sewers, which means that the, you know, people in one district, maybe as Peter was just talking about, are very concerned about the effects of, on the cost of their district as opposed, when we build something else. We try to be meticulously fair with splitting up those costs, but it's a concern of people's as it is, the way it is. What we do with the delay here to end Phase Two, there's a number of ways we can address the cost issue. One is we can apply for grants. We do that anyway, but I want to point out Littleton here, who has a very largely-supported recent sewer project that is, that has a large grant support for it. They also have a different way of paying for the betterments, and I'll talk about that in just a second. We can change the project area. We can make the project area a little bit bigger, which would reduce the betterments for all. We could do other things there. We could improve the betterment payment options. Right now, you either pay right up front for everything or over 30 years, but you're often paying before you need to hook up to the sewer, before your own septic system fails. And we can consider a general revenue contribution to the sewers to reduce the cost for everyone. This will allow us to act as a community and not have all of us vote to increase the betterments for just a small percentage of us. So if we pass Phase Two at a future town meeting, that plus Phase One, if we pass it tonight, becomes the entire project. By the entire project, I mean that's what we'll have the betterments for at the end. If we only do Phase One, if, you know, a future town meeting does not want to go forward with Phase Two, then Phase One becomes the entire project, in which case, we originally built it just for the school, but we would open up connections to all the people that that pipe, that red squiggly pipe I showed you earlier, connects along Mass Ave and Spruce Street, and we would have betterments just for Phase One. These financials apply only if we do Phase One, because if we, we will roll those financials into Phase Two for the combined project if town meeting chooses to support the Phase Two next year. So it's a $1.9 million project, partially paid for by the school, $200,000 paid for by the town, leaves $1.1 million in, paid for by betterments, which probably will work out to about $22,000 per betterment unit, which is a single-family house. That's 1.34, we have a $1.34 million approved loan from the Clean Water Trust. One thing to note here is that sewers don't control development. Zoning controls development. Lack of, lack of sewers disproportionately affects businesses because businesses are often on very small lots. They don't have places to move their sewers. They don't have places to expand their sewers. They often have more wastewater, like for a spa or a restaurant or something like that. If we don't, you know, the West Acton got a shot in the arm when Village Works was built. If we don't continue to support our businesses there, I believe that there's a chance that that area will become less vital than it is today. Lack of sewers doesn't prevent residential development. There are, after the sewer district was put into South Acton, there were 142 residential units built in 40Bs, but during that same timeframe, there were 564 housing units built in the rest of Acton. Now, the rest of Acton is bigger, but it just goes to show that the, that the lack of sewers didn't stop that development. We're also in safe harbor now, so that we can't put 40Bs anywhere, 40Bs or which are low-income developments have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. One misconception I want to correct here is that, there seems to be a bit of confusion about this, is that the zoning in West Acton allows for a floor area ratio of .4 for either business or residential. The floor area ratio means how much, how many, what's the area inside your building versus what lot size you have? So if you have a 10,000-foot, square-foot lot, you can build a 4,000-square-foot building on all your floors. The zoning allows a 7, .7 floor area ratio, but only for mixed use. Some people are saying that it applies to, you can have a residential development with all, all residential development with .7 floor area ratio. That's not correct. Most of the businesses in West Acton have asked us for sewers, and they've come to the forums and been very supportive. And this project has been recommended by various boards and committees. I would appreciate your support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have a con presentation. While the con presenters are coming on down, would the Finance Committee care to give its recommendation on this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee has rigorously debated the West Acton sewer proposal, including the separation of the initial proposal into the two phases as Selectman Martin has outlined. As he's also outlined, the $1.9 million cost of Phase One would generally, a portion of which would be borne by the school, but also be borne by residents and businesses that would be bettered, that being the $1.1 million left over, leaving roughly a $200,000 cost to the town. The Finance Committee debated the positives and the negatives of this small investment. The positives including the potential for further economic development of the West Acton Village, and in particular, allow the restaurants' expansion, further expansion, among other benefits. The concerns regarding the Phase One proposal include the compressed timeframe in which Phase One and Phase Two are being proposed, as well as the broader concerns to the original project, including costs borne by the residents in particular. To reiterate, we've debated this over multiple meetings over many months, and during this time, despite the modest cost to the town, we also considered many other variables, that being the cost borne by the residents, as well as some of the knowns and unknowns that are going to be discussed this evening. With these factors in consideration, the Finance Committee voted six to three to not recommend Article III as motioned. Thank you.
All right. Could we please have 14 minutes on the clock? Band-aid. Is there a band-aid in the house? There we go. Several. Good to know. All right, please proceed and be sure to introduce yourselves.
We are Chris Williams and Nancy Waters, and we live in the larger proposed West Acton Sewer District. Hello. I want to thank all the voters and Moderator Berry. Chris and I know this has been a very long and exhausting night, so we appreciate your patience. We sincerely hope you will listen to us with open minds and open hearts. The motion before you this evening is substantially different from the one that was originally proposed. We are grateful and relieved that the Sewer Committee and Selectman Martin have finally acknowledged one of the concerns we have been bringing to them for several months by signaling that they will try to produce a fairer and less expensive sewer plan for West Acton than the one that would have saddled ourselves and our neighbors with exorbitant mandatory sewer betterments, the most expensive in Massachusetts history. But alas, tonight's hastily-produced and still unclear 11th-hour Hail Mary passive emotion is not an improvement. This remains a project in search of a compelling rationale, an expensive solution in search of a real problem, and even worse, it is more divisive and less inclusive than the previous proposal. It continues to pit neighborhood against neighborhood, neighbor against neighbor. We urge you to vote against this motion, which remains unnecessary, unfair, and unkind, but is now also, because of its haste, manifestly unwise. How does the clicker work? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First and foremost, the new school does not need the proposed sewer line, and it is unclear that the school district would even choose to hang, to hook up. The design for the new school already includes an approved septic system. The school-building committee is neutral on the sewer, as they confirmed earlier tonight. The school representative on the Sewer Committee voted against this Phase One plan just last Thursday. The MSBA does not require sewers. In fact, it is against Massachusetts regulations for them to do In addition, being, in addition, being hooked up to the sewer line would be more expensive for the Acton-Boxborough School District. As the slide shows, sewer usage fees could cost the schools $14,000 more per year than simply pumping the septic would. That money could be spent on other educational priorities. The Phase One sewer would cost Acton taxpayers at least $200,000, and the final cost to the town depends on several contingencies. You may be under the impression that septic systems in West Acton are a particularly compelling environmental issue, but this is not the case.
What do we know about the water in West Acton? Fecal coliform and nitrates are two important markers of septic discharge, which have been monitored by the Acton Health Department. Fecal coliform bacteria in West Acton is lower than Acton's average. Nitrate levels measured at monitoring wells from 2009 to 2013 in West Acton were found to be low, consistently below drinking water limits. According to this Health Department data, there is no indication of septic discharge in the environment of West Acton, and the Acton Water District has taken no position on this sewer proposal. Title V design variance due to lot size, silent septic failure, has been mentioned as reasons to sewer at West Acton. If these were an issue, we would see some evidence of it in environmental measures, but fecal coliform and nitrate levels show no indication of septic contamination in West Acton. Mounded systems have also been mentioned. Noticeably mounded systems are not common in West Acton, and where they have been needed in the past, they're less likely to be needed now because of advances in septic system technology. Also note that the Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plan does not identify high groundwater as a limiting factor in West Acton, and found that most of West Acton has over six feet to groundwater. My own lot abuts a pond and a brook and still has six feet to groundwater. You may also be under the impression that sewers would be more cost-effective for the town and homeowners. Actually, this is most often not the case. We surveyed 10 years of Board of Health's septic records for all one and two-family homes in the Phase One and Phase Two sewer districts. We found that the septic replacement rate was low, 1.44% per year, which implies an expected septic system life of about 70 years, also stated by one of the authors of the CWRMP, Pio Lombardo. Replacement septic systems can either be conventional or innovative alternative, called IA. Most IA systems installed today are similar in cost to a traditional system in West Acton. The average total cost of septic replacement in West Acton is $30,000, and the expected maintenance is $170 per year. Finally, we have found no one or two-family homes in the proposed districts, Phase One or Phase Two, that have needed the more expensive nitrogen reduction systems. These next two slides compare the cost of septic to sewer for a single-family home in West Acton under the originally proposed mandatory betterment of nearly $40,000, which again would have been, according to our research, the most expensive in Massachusetts history. Until we received the new motion text yesterday, this was the proposal for West Acton. These two slides show that septic is more affordable than sewers. For more information about the costs of the original proposal, please go to the Friends of West Acton website at friendsofwestacton.org. And on this slide, you can see the cost for someone who has a septic failure immediately. Sewers are still more expensive.
You must evaluate the motion before you on its own, sorry. You must evaluate the motion before you on its own merits. The Sewer Committee and Selectman Martin have suggested that the town's sewer bylaw can be made fairer and less onerous, but that is a suggestion. It is not a plan. If Phase Two is not approved and completed, Phase One homeowners will be forced to pay betterments of up to $22,000, an amount that was just arrived at in the last few days. This could, they could also be stuck with expensive and unreliable low-pressure systems. This is a brand-new feature of this motion. Several homeowners on Mass Ave and Spruce Street have never even been informed of this. There simply has not been enough time to do so. Fairer betterments for Phase One would require change to the town's decades-old sewer bylaw after the sewer project has begun, which is a very, which is very risky and would require shifting significant costs to the general tax base and expending funds on the sewer that the town could have devoted to other priorities.
If Phase Two does not happen, all homeowners in the proposed Phase One sewer district would find themselves stuck with expensive and unreliable low-pressure grinder pump systems. There has been no time to enforce homeowners, homeowners of this change. Not all homeowners would have had low pressure on the Phase One route in the original plan. We suspect some of them are learning of this for the first time tonight. Low-pressure sewers cost $6,000 to $8,000 to install and connect to the sewer main line. They fail every seven to 10 years with normal, with normal use. That is, the grinder pump fails every seven to 10 years. They cost $2,000 to $4,000 to replace, which would be an emergency installation. The grinder pumps are also susceptible to failure if sand, plastic toys, or other non-sewage items accidentally enter the system. Finally, these systems require a backup generator to operate during power outages. Otherwise, water use is very limited, and raw sewage can overflow into the yard.
A persistent claim of sewer, a persistent claim of sewer promoters is that the West Acton Village Business District needs sewers to stay vibrant. This argument, pardon the pun, does not hold water. This is what vibrant looks like. West Acton Village is, in the words of Selectman Martin himself, Acton's most successful village, without a sewer. There is currently one empty storefront on Mass Ave, a vacancy rate that other commercial districts in the region would envy. It is home to a small, locally-owned, independent businesses who clean my clothes, groom my dog, cut my hair, fill my family's prescriptions, serve my son double espressos, and have helped furnish my home. I am grateful to have such services within walking distance, and it is or has been a very friendly place. These small, independent businesses operate on small margins, and many of these proprietors are renters. If the sewer goes through, their landlords will have to raise their rents to pay the assessed betterments. Again, contrary to what you have heard, many business proprietors in the village do not want the sewer. Judith Romatelli of Periwinkle told us, "I'm a small business, and it's a struggle. Betterment fees passed on from the building owner could substantially increase my rent and potentially put me out of business. If small businesses can't survive here, it will change the whole personality of the village." Dave Abear, the very hard-working owner of Legend Cafe, told us, "It will not be cost-effective for us to stay in West Acton if we get hit with betterment and usage fees. There is nothing I want to do with my business that I can't do now with a septic system." Please note that Legend Cafe is on Spruce Street. Dave's landlord would be assessed a betterment if this motion went through, and his rent would be likely to rise. Please also note the picture on the left. You may recognize that block of storefronts from Selectman Martin's slide, or at least it was in the earlier version. You may also have heard that with sewers, and you can see the sign, no sewers. You may have also heard that with sewers, West Acton will gain more and better restaurants, as if this barely four-square-block village, far from major routes, were destined to become a Metro West restaurant mecca. Where will all those diners park? Where would True West put the beer garden we have heard about? In the parking lot? The swamp? We have also heard that with a sewer in place, the village's restaurants can do better things. Twin Seafood, for example, can use dishes and stainless instead of the less environmentally-friendly paper and plastic. But if that is true, why is True West still using paper and plastic, True West, excuse me, Twin Seafood, why is Twin Seafood still using paper and plastic in its West Concord location, which has been on a sewer line for decades? That's a photo of my lunch from two weeks ago today at the West Concord Twin Seafood. This process has been extraordinarily rushed. The town may have been discussing sewers since before I was born, but this motion was only provided to us yesterday. We don't understand all the implications. You don't understand all the implications, and we are frankly not convinced that the Sewer Committee does either. Because it has been so rushed and depends on so many contingencies, it is also extremely risky. The motion before you was not voted on by the Board of Selectmen until Friday, and we only received the final wording yesterday. Today's motion lacks critical information, including a detailed cost breakdown. It is confusing. Can the voters really be expected to understand such technical terms as low-pressure, high-pressure forced, gravity sewer, innovative and alternative septic systems, et cetera, based on two 14-minute presentations? It contains no mention of the added costs and burdens to homeowners of low-pressure systems. It is dependent on too many contingencies. What happens if the school doesn't hook up? What happens if the town doesn't change the bylaw? What happens if Town Meeting votes against Phase Two? You, the voters, have not been given any time to evaluate the information presented today by either the Sewer Committee or by Chris and myself. You deserve that time. This is a crisis response in search of an actual emergency. As some of you know, Acton has been fighting about sewers for decades. Sadly, the combatants don't seem to have learned anything from these battles, like how to have a fair, inclusive, constructive process for resolving real and legitimate disagreements. Consequently, over the last year, we have been confronted with a process that pits neighborhood against neighborhood, neighbor against neighbor, citizen against elected official, business against business. This motion is no better. In fact, it is arguably worse. It again pits neighbor against neighbor and will be used as a lever. To rescue our Phase One neighbors, the folks in the rest of the proposed district will be asked to support Phase Two. We will be told we are good, not good, and decent neighbors unless we do so. South Acton residents have already been told that to relieve themselves of high sewage sewer usage rates, they should vote for the West Acton sewer, even though our research suggests this is unlikely to help them. And to save all of us in the district from huge betterments, taxpayers who have just voted themselves a huge tax increase tonight will have to agree to either do it again next year, or sacrifice other town priorities, or be the bad guys. It doesn't have to be this way. I'm missing a page here. I'm missing my page, but I'll just wing it. Oh, sorry. Okay. Ten years ago, the attempt to sewer the Spencer Tuttle Flint neighborhood was voted down at Town Meeting when objections similar to ours were raised. It was a divisive and conflict-laden process. Carolyn Dittes from that neighborhood told us, "By way of the steady stream of misinformation, the committee pitted neighbor against neighbor and created conflict in our neighborhood." Sadly, some of these relationships are still broken 10 years later. And Mike Geis, also from that neighborhood, said, "In 2009, the Sewer Committee put forward inaccurate data to try to sell sewers to Spencer Tuttle Flint. Residents were disappointed and frustrated, just as they are in West Acton today. From the beginning, we were never asked what we wanted. We were told what was on offer and that we should like it, apparently because someone decided this was what they wanted decades ago. It was suggested that we were dim-witted because we couldn't see the beauty of the plan or understand the Sewer Committee's strange arithmetic." This is your chance to let your voice be heard on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now move to the Town Meeting members. Speaker at microphone one.
Good evening. I'm Jo Ambasette. I live on Church Street in West Acton. I'm a member of the West Acton Sewer Committee and also a member of the Board of Health. I tend to differ with some of the items that were just mentioned. This is not an emergency. It's something that's been planned for a number of years. The town, 15, 20 years ago, built a wastewater treatment plant that has excess capacity. The town supersized the infrastructure to accommodate extra wastewater. The Comprehensive Water Resources Management Plan, which was a large endeavor undertaken by the town in the early 2000s, identified certain areas of town that were needs areas for sewers. West Acton was one of them, for both environmental reasons and economic development reasons. As a Board of Health member, we do see a number of variances come before the Board for septic repair.
Yeah, we can still, oh. Please keep microphone one on. It's blinking. You could move over to microphone two. You've got about 30 seconds.
Hello?
There you go.
Okay. So out of the 42 new septic systems that were repaired or replaced in West Acton, nearly 60% needed either a variance, nitrogen removal, a mounded system, or any combination thereof. When the Board of Health issues a variance, it means that a fully compliant system cannot be installed, which is not environmentally preferable. So I would ask the Town Meeting to vote for Phase One, to give the Sewer Committee time to reexamine the way we do betterments. We understand that they're not fair enough equitable. Thank you.
There is a handheld mic in the room somewhere. Could we have it over there in the microphone one area, if that's possible? Speaker at microphone two.
Thanks. Hi, everybody. My name is Ron Beck from 80 Estrobrooke Road, not in that district. I do have some particular background I'd like to mention before making my comments. I authored, co-authored, two reports some years ago for the US EPA, one a national study of wastewater treatment plant effectiveness, and the second a regional study for one of the largest areas that sewers were planned for, namely Long Island. And I've been a member of the Water Resources Committee for the last 11 years or so, and chairman of that committee for the last six or seven years. I'd like to make two, I could make a lot of comments, but I'd like to make two in particular. The first I'd like, the point I'd like to make is, I'd like everybody to think about what the school presentation consisted of, and they made a big point of the fact that they were putting in place a comprehensive water recycling system, where they were capturing all water off of the impervious areas of the school and recycling them for gray water to use in their toilets. And they explained the reason for that, which was to move, put the water back into the ground there. The reason for that is that the town of Acton needs a very robust water cycle. In order to manage its water resources, we get all of our drinking water from groundwater. What the sewer systems do if they're extended to West Acton is move water in substantial quantities from West Acton, at the west end of town, to the east edge of town, where water flows into Concord. So it basically removes water from our recharge system instead of using, utilizing it. So, you know, I think there is, you have to look at the costs and benefits of a sewer system.
Your time has expired.
Okay. And they're clearly negative in this case.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Lauren Rosenzweig-Morton, 26 Marshall Path. One day at the end of last summer, I was riding my bike to West Acton Village. It was teeming with people. The ice cream shop was open. There were people pulling their kids in wagons to go get an ice cream. There were people going to True West. There were people going to all the shops, people going to the drugstore. Everybody was out, and the place was teeming with people, many of them walking there. And this village didn't happen by accident. It takes people to make a village. It takes people that... It takes people that live near the village. This was what people in Acton said they wanted. And so we did succeed in doing that, which is good. I know some people that live near some of the housing we put in are not happy with that, but those people are the ones that are coming to the shops and keeping them vibrant. So the main thing that I want to express is that you have to separate out what the sewers do and what the zoning does. One of the things that's important to know in West Acton is there's a high water table, and there's lots of people, and people poop. And the poop goes down and the water goes up, and you don't want them to meet. You want to keep them separated. I'm sorry to be so blunt, but this is my many-time go-around with sewers. And it's very hard to find the fair way to help the people that need it and have trouble with their septics and keeping them maintained, and the people that have just fixed their system and paid an exorbitant rate to fix it. I don't blame them. None of us blame them. But we have an opportunity here to start a sewer project and serve the schools and have that $600,000 that we then can maybe have less of a cost to the businesses. And we definitely know we need to regroup. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Alyssa Nichols, School Street. After sewers were put in South Acton Village, several small businesses were replaced by housing. It makes no difference that one was vacant, most weren't retail, or we might find apartments more attractive than a storage facility. The point is that commercial tax base was decreased, and residential development, which places a much higher burden on our schools, services, and resources like water, took its place. The potential for the same to happen in West Acton Village should greatly concern residents and taxpayers. Selectman Martin told us that only 142 new residences were added to the sewer district over the past 17 years. On Friday, when he was asked how many businesses, the reply was, "None really." At least 104 of those 142 residents, or 70%, were Chapter 40B units. Chapter 40B allows developers to bypass local zoning and build at much higher density and in wetlands buffer zones. While some would like to see more development in West Acton, we need to ask ourselves what kind. Sewering is not critical to the economic vitality of West Acton Village. That's already been achieved without sewers. Sewering West Acton was not a recommendation of the Acton 2020 Plan. The Plan contains only an action item to consider sewers along with other alternatives to wastewater management. Sewers are not environmentally superior to septic. Although some believe this, the EPA clearly states otherwise. The Committee claims a majority of businesses are in support of sewers, that many attended meetings and spoke in favor. We've heard from other business owners and tenants who were not made aware of these forums, who are against this article, even as amended, but hesitant to speak for fear of upsetting customers or landlords. You can't claim a majority are in favor if you haven't spoken to them all. I urge you to vote no on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. It appears we have a speaker in the gym area.
Yes, Madam Moderator. We do have a speaker.
Hi, Eric Hilfer, 16 Orchard Drive. I was a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee to the CWRMP for its entire duration, and I do want to clarify that although there are some areas of West Acton in general and Indian Village that do have a water table issue, it was not noted by our committee as a pervasive issue or a driver for ranking at that time, so I wanted to be clear about that. Also, as someone had stated about groundwater recharge in West Acton, as elsewhere, groundwater recharge is important. The way the sewer treatment plant works, we're essentially discharging the treated water in the proximity of the Acidat River, and the majority of the water flows there. In fact, it's important that it flows there because we do have a discharge restriction. People did correctly say we have supersized collection pipes to that treatment facility based on initial plans, but in fact, we're not allowed to use that full capacity because we're limited by discharge. The infiltration beds are too close to the Acidat wells, and to protect the wells from travel time of discharged treated water, we don't actually use the full discharge capacity of the plant, and we probably never will unless there's some kind of technological advance. So I do have a question. In terms of that discharge limit, I know that this current Phase One, Phase Two plans live within that limit. How much beyond the Phase One, Phase Two plan could we potentially go without hitting that discharge limit? And I'm recommending against supporting this article.
Thank you. I believe there's a question on the floor? Should somebody?
So the discharge limit is kind of not all or nothing because people hook up gradually? The plant has plenty of discharge capacity for all the area of West Acton, plus some? It's not an exact thing because the discharge is in -- we have a permitted discharge from the DEP of 299,000 gallons a day, and that's an any-given-day period. And so we don't get really close to that now. And there are ways to buffer that if we were to get close to it. So it's not an exact science. It's not like there's a -- it's a level thing. The discharge goes up and down. In fact, on a day like today, it probably goes up because it's rainy.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yes, thank you. And I think the implication then is we could be looking at further phases with additional betterments for other areas of West Acton beyond Phase Two.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone one.
Does this work now? Oh, I guess it works now. Franny Osman, West Acton. I want to thank the Committee and the Board of Selectmen for coming up with this split-phase method. In general, I find the Committees and the staff have been working very hard, and I trust them with their decisions. I think they have listened to people's concerns, and this splitting of the phase and this process will work to continue to respond to those concerns. So I don't see that as a reason to not vote. I don't see that as a major last-minute thing. This has been discussed and being worked toward for years. I also have spoken to several businesses who find that they have to empty their tanks, like a hair business having every three weeks to empty their tank, restaurants that feel they could have more tables or have outside tables who are limited by it. I think sewers are efficient. They clean the water well, and I think it's sometimes hard to see change. But the change that we would get from this would include more options for residences that are smaller and accessible. It would allow people with businesses and with houses to do some things that are creative and can help keep people in town who otherwise would have to leave. I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Sal Panetta, Sal's Auto and Truck Repair. My name is Sal Panetta. I'm the owner of Sal's Auto and Truck Repair in the proposed sewer district. I'm an Acton resident for over 30 years. Six weeks ago, the town engineer called to inform me that we would be assessed a betterment fee of $800,000. We were never asked if our business would benefit from sewers. Sewers will not allow me to service more cars. Sewers will not allow me to help expand my current business. As a resident, a business owner, a landowner, we were never asked if we wanted sewers. At $800,000, our business was going to be assessed the highest betterment in the proposed district, almost 10% of the project. I don't know how we will pay this outrageous fee. Even with Phase One, commercial property owners abutting the Phase One line may be forced to sell their lands to developers. We don't know if the bylaw change will happen. This proposal is harmful to several small businesses in the district. When I expressed my concerns about this to the Committee, my concerns were ignored. They continue to say that all of West Acton businesses were in favor, but that is not true. Many businesses are not taking a stand because they have customers on both sides and don't want to offend their customers. Many businesses are concerned. The whole process is unfair. Is this any way to run a town? Please vote no to Phase One. This whole project needs to be reevaluated. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone three.
Larry Kanah, Betsy Ross Circle. I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. The EEC has supported the project to extend sewers into West Acton for the benefits that sewers will bring to many of the West Acton businesses. We support the recent decision to delay the bulk of the sewer project so that the Board and the town can explore ways to reduce the cost being passed on to the residents of West Acton. We would also like to thank the people of West Acton for all of their work to explain the impact of those costs to the Board and to the rest of the town. First steps of the West Acton sewer project, as described in the revised Article III, will begin to extend infrastructure support for sewers to West Acton businesses. The EEC supports this article, and we invite all of you to join us and vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone four.
So the Sewer Committee says they held a public forum for residents, but they didn't inform homeowners in the first place. So when I first read the letter from the town, I didn't think I would have to pay the betterment if I did not hook up. I don't know, there was a usage fee or a hookup cost. The letter was very misleading. So you can see, my English is -- English, I have a strong accent, so English is not my first language, but trust me, I can write better letter. So also, when the residents from West Acton brought more accurate septic cost information to the Committee in early November, the Committee did not correct their septic cost estimates. So now, at the last minute, a new Phase One is being proposed, which would require a change to the bylaw after the start of projects. So that's very risky. So this is not good governance. So as town, we can do better than this. So West Acton residents deserve better than this. So that's why I strongly against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. I do -- could we just not do that? I do want to be cognizant. It is 10 o'clock, and there are many of you who clearly have something to say. I would -- first, let me ask the famous question. How many people know how they're going to vote? I think that is compelling. I do want to balance the needs of the greater meeting against all of you, and I think that it's better to go ahead and take the vote at this time. So it's been moved. So here's the thing. I get to do it myself. There is a procedural question at microphone one. Yes, sir. It -- can you get closer? Go ahead over to -- oh, there we go. Thank you.
Bob Peon from Central Street. The town warrants did not have the phases identified that went out in the mail. So my procedural question is, what are we voting on? Are we voting on the original warrant, or are we voting on the warrant that was presented tonight that we just saw tonight? So the question is --
Yes, I will -- yes.
I don't think it's clear at all.
Okay. The motion that we are voting on, and oftentimes, the motion that we vote on is different than what you receive in the warrant. And part of that is because different final language and perhaps numbers need to be finalized after the printing deadline. And this, in this particular article, different changes were made to, for various reasons, that do make it different than what was in the original article, yet it is still on the same topic. So we are voting the Phase One portion of the West Acton Sewer District expansion, as Mr. Martin explained, just the part to hook up to the schools. I hope that is clear. So this does require a two-thirds vote. Question? I made the motion. I said we're cutting off debate. That's why I said I can do this on my own. But fair question. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes. All righty. A means yes. Point of order.
I understand that you can call the question, but I think you still have to get a vote of town meeting.
I do not. I can call for a vote. That is allowed.
I think we can appeal that. I mean, it's bad policy to not -- the reason I say this --
I believe it was quite clear that people were in favor.
The reason I say this is because there were 20 or 30 people waiting to speak, not me, but other people, and I think there should be a vote of town meeting to move the question.
All who are in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye!
Any who are opposed, please say nay. Thank you. All righty. If you are wishing to vote yes, please press the A button when I say the window is open. And if you are voting no, press the E for elephant button. Let us please open the voting window. Is everyone's device working? All right, let's close the voting window, please. Oh, wait. Let's take -- Broken. Please wait to leave until the vote is closed. Okay. Are we all set? Voting is closed. Thank you. I think it's okay if people leave now, that we're done voting. Please keep it down. We're almost done. The vote fails. Thank you all for attending and voting tonight. I would take a motion to dissolve the meeting.
Motion to dissolve.
Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you.